...September 18, 2018. We are called to order the City Council meeting for the City of Statesboro, Georgia. We have our invocation and pledge of allegiance by Councilman Gervion.
Yeah, that is correct. All those who respect the opportunity, the opportunity to serve one another. All those who go forward and make the city's tonight operate in the best mindset we have, we can have discussion, but also in the best mindset that people have. We're here to serve each other, to be here for each other, to grow, together as a community in multiple ways and all of these things. And it's a relationship for us. It's just a very necessary thing to see that clearly.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item three, which is recognition of public presentation. We have a proclamation recognizing September the 17th through 23rd, 2018. It's Constitution Week. Mr. James Young, if you'll come forward as I read the proclamation. The proclamation reads as follows. A proclamation by the Mayor and City Council of Statesboro, Georgia for Constitution Week. Whereas September the 17th, 28th marks the 231st anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by a Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition in this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the dedication, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September the 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, Jonathan McCullough, by virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Statesboro, do hereby proclaim the week of September the 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideas of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by visibly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained, and witness whereof I have unswear my hand and cause the seal of the City of Statesboro to affix this ancient day of September of the year of my Lord, 2018. All right, we move now to agenda item four, which is for public comments. Ms. Sue, has anybody signed up for public comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, we move to agenda item five, which is consideration of a motion to approve consent agenda, which is approval amendments towards city council meeting for September 4th and executive session meeting for September 4th. Is there a motion to approve? All right, is there a second? All those who say yes. All right, all right. All right, we'll move down to agenda item six, which is a public hearing, consideration of a motion to approve application RZ 18-07-02, Windward South request a zoning map amendment of 19.2 acres from 54.12 acre property located at S&amp;S Railroad Bed Road from R10, R8 single family residential to a planned unit development, zoning district in order to develop multifamily residential subdivision. Is there a motion to open a public hearing? Is there a second?
Second.
All those who say yes.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. The item we have for us tonight is RZ 180702. It's a zoning map amendment request for S&amp;S Railroad Bed Road. Request is for 19.2 acres of a 54.12 parcel from R10 to R8 to PUD planning development for a multifamily residential development. The applicant is Mr. David Pierce of Windward South, and the owners are C F N Partners, L&amp;S Acquisitions, LLC. Specifically, the applicant requesting a zoning map amendment of 19.2 acres to be subdivided from the 54.12 acre property located at S&amp;S Railroad Bed Road from the R10/R8 single family residential zoning district to the PUD planning and development zoning district in order to construct a multifamily residential subdivision consisting of 119 units and 261 beds. If you will direct your attention to the video screen above, you'll see the parcel in question. It's really just the dividing point is that green weapons area moving forward. Portion to the south of that is not part of this consideration. This is the site plan in question. You'll see there's one access point. That's also an access point to the business facility that was approved a couple of months ago, so they'll be utilizing one access point off of Railroad Bed Road. They have two entrances and exits off of that access point. These are triplexes, some are duplexes. You'll see a couple duplexes in there, and of course, the attention upon the property is surrounded by weapons. You can see those building named there. This is the proposed landscape plan. You'll hear as part of staff recommendations that we will be requiring a revised site plan, excuse me, landscape plan as part of this proposal. Again, just another aerial view. This is showing the property looking up and down Railroad Bed Road. It's the property in question. Again, looking up and down the road. This is an aerial view of that property. Again, it's just a section above that greenland, green wetlands area, our green wetlands area. And as we mentioned before, this project will be a B simple development in that these units will be individually sold for ownership, not a owner, a sole owner. Staff recommended approval of the zoning map amendment based on the PUD site plans submitted on July 6th, 2018 with the following conditions as stated. A, bylaws and restricted covenants are to be recorded prior to construction, undertaking commitments when approved by staff. B, staff approval of the new landscape plan as I mentioned before. C, site plan to be revised for piece of ownership, which they have included that now as their original staff requirements. At the regularly scheduled meeting held on August 7th, 2018 at 5:00 p.m., the planning commission voted 5-0 to approve the application request with the staff recommendations and conditions as listed. This proposal was first seen by City Council at the regularly scheduled meeting held on Tuesday, August 21st, 2018 at 5:30 p.m. The State Department of City Council tabled this zoning map amendment request until tonight, September 18th, 2018, 5:30 p.m., City Council meeting. Councilman requests in an effort of the developer to meet with community members to reach some type of compromise. I have reached out to the developer prior to the meeting, and he has met with the groups, I believe, a number of times, and has agreed to a couple of compromises, and we would include those as part of the conditions of this proposal. They include adding an additional five foot of landscape buffer. You'll notice on the site plan, there's a 30-foot landscape buffer that was included originally that we required. He's going to shift the development a little further south and add another five-foot additional buffer. He's also agreed to install a landscape berm, which will be one and a half foot at height the berm will be, and then landscape above that. And as well, as we were discussing with you today, on the trail itself, he will pay for installing the stop signs on the trail itself as part of the proposal. So at this time, I believe we have some folks here that are speaking in favor and against the proposal.
All right, we'd like to remind everyone that it's a three-minute time limit for speaking this concern. Is there anyone here to speak for the developer?
Mr. Mayor, my name is John Dawson with the firm National Bed, and if you would forgive, I would like to reserve my time if it means I would like to speak after them if you would.
You want to speak after those or speak against it? Are you asking me to allow you to speak?
I will speak for, and if anybody to speak against it, I would like to speak after them.
Okay. I'll tell you what, let's go ahead and do you now, because the way it's set up is it's for and then it's against, and then we turn it over to council discussion. If council feels the need to ask any further questions at that time, then council can feel free to do that.
No problems. Again, my name is John Dawson, representing Windward South, and I just want to indicate that this property is located on Railroad Bed Road, S&amp;S Railroad. The property is some of the members of the City Council who are involved. I came before y'all in September of 2014. It was rezoned from R8 to R10 to PUD. We backed down before you to ask for the PUD and the rezoning project. This would be the third project that was on S&amp;S Railroad, on the intersection of the way to come on the road. First being the beach replacement. The second would be the CrossFit, which was meant to lead to a rezoning in the past couple of months, so this would be project number three. City of Statesboro has invested a considerable time and effort and money in this area. They've installed a rezonation that serves beach replacement, and it was designed to serve this whole area. There's a toilet and water main, so they didn't install the long one, the walkway, and it was served this whole area. And they have developed plans for San Antonio Sewer to be run along the southern side of this property all the way to the rest of this six feet of parcel. A portion of this from the rezonation two, the road the plant was talking about, is either bent watered or is in the process of being watered and changed. Based on the installation of the San Antonio Sewer and the water lines, the city is encouraging development along this area. As Frank showed on the sketch plan, you know, we have 119 units, obviously 31 buildings, 119 units. These buildings could be sold individually, or if the mayor so chose, and we wanted to buy a building with three inches, you could buy that, that's about different options. We will have, my draw would have 262 beds, Frank has 260, and we won't go any further than that, so. And it will be said to be script for covenants as part of the rezonation process, as Frank said, this will have to be addressed. If you look at the draw, out of the 19 acres, there's 16 acres that would be in common area now. This common area would include drives, parking, and all of that. At least eight acres of this common area would be in green space. It would be inclusive of the wetlands, the potential for, um... Now, one thing that I was not, actually probably unaware of the additional five foot, I know that we had all 30-foot vegetation buffer along the runway, but it was 35, and they didn't bring it to the question.
We're about three minutes. I'm sorry, three minutes.
Is that timed up?
Yes. Is there anyone else to speak for?
My name is Julie Sullivan. I just, I drive by this green space, the walkway, probably four or five times a day coming in back toward the town, and I think this is a situation where both sides can get what they want. The developer can put in a nice development, yet they have 40 or 35 feet of green space, which is probably from here to that wall, and with a berm of thickly dense trees where people walking by wouldn't really notice the houses over there, and it would be pretty quiet. Yet, there's a reason you walk down this green space is because you have some people around you. If we all just went out and walked, like, out in the county, for instance, you'd be afraid because there's no people around. I don't feel like I could go walk, like, just down the street, down the highway because I'm afraid, you know, to go there. So I think it benefits both people, the developer, to have development, yet people walking because they have a place to walk that's safe. So I think in this situation, both sides get what they want, and I think they should pass it, because I think the developers working with the green space, and yet green space people probably want to work.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else to speak for? We have two coming at a time. You want?
Mayor, City Council, my name is David Pierce. I'm part of the Windward South, and we just wanted to express our desire to work with the community in Statesboro, and that's really our greatest desire, safety is our number one desire, safety. We want to continue to work hard for safety and health.
Thank you.
Okay, Sullivan, and two of the men that are involved in this project, one is my son, and the other is my son-in-law, and I love that green space, I love that walkway, it's beautiful, and that's the way I want to see Statesboro developing. I'd just like to add my personal guarantee that if they mess this up, I will make both of their lives miserable.
Anything else for the project? Okay, anyone against the project?
Good evening, my name is Robert Caussemanis. I've communicated with all of you, via email, my opposition to this proposal, and I just want to say again that we are not against any development on the Greenway, we understand the people that I proposed to this, that I have been talking to, understand that some development is going to happen. Question is, how dense should it be, and what provisions have been made to prepare for this development? I just want to frame a few things. I've been looking at the document allotted by Mr. Neal, right? You know, when you look at the way this piece of land has gone, it's gone from a one-acre, basically, R40 zoning, down to R10, down to R8, and now, I'm not sure what R we're at anymore, we're not at R, we're below R. But you can see from the picture that the amount of space allotted to each home is very small, from the back, doesn't add up to a hill of beans. I don't really see how we have eight or 10 acres of common area there when the whole place is consumed by roads and buildings. So I think it's a little disingenuous on the part of Windward South to suggest that this is somehow a green space. There is no green space, there's just lots of houses packed in like sardines. Anyway, one of the things that comes up in the analysis, and again, it's how you present the material. The current zoning is R10, R8. The PUD says, as in the document, says something like this. The district has declared, the PUD district has declared, has the declared purpose of to permit flexibility in situations where modifications or specific provisions of this ordinance will not be conferred to its intent and purpose. But it doesn't finish the paragraph, which also says, "or significantly inconsistent with the planning on which it is based, and will not be harmful to the neighborhood in which they occur." And I contend that this particular development is harmful to the neighborhood in which it will occur by virtue of its density. 119 units, 261 cars, I mean, beds are going to be crossing the Greenway every day, back and forth multiple times. I don't think this is a path for success. Mr. Neal says there'll be more development behind this that's going to also need to access this. So I would say, right now, the most, the best thing we can do is stop this thing for a while, come back with a less dense plan, and let's go from there. The way it is right now, it's not safe, and I don't want to, I don't think we should pursue it until we know it can be safe. So, thank you very much. I'll be next.
Is there anyone else to speak against this?
Danny Gleason, and I've been involved with this from the beginning, and I would just like to make three points tonight, really, I have three minutes, so I guess that works. I'd first like to say, reiterate that we're not against development, however, we do feel that development must be done in a responsible manner, and must follow a sustainable plan, and a little bit more on this later on. My second point is that sometimes we need to protect business people and developers from themselves, and I think the reason this is, is because this Greenway is a public resource, and so it's got to be protected both in terms of its aesthetics and its safety. Additionally, this is the only 100-foot of right away that we have in the county, so it is not easily replaced, and this means we need to be even more careful with how we develop it. Many public dollars went into the Greenway developments, so it belongs to the taxpayers. The development of the increase, of the Greenway increased the value of the land in the area and provides a direct benefit to businesses that locate there, so those businesses have an undeniable responsibility to keep it safe, usable and beautiful for all of us who invested in this development. However, history shows that business people and developers do not always understand how to maintain the long-term value of a resource, especially when it's a natural resource, and may damage it, which can be detrimental to their profits as well as the greater well-being of the community. Let me give you an example. I'm a marine biologist, I've done a lot with resource management and fisheries. I went out with a charter boat captain, and a charter boat captain asked me why there are so many management restrictions on catching fish, and the charter boat captain said, "I can take any customer out, and if they tell me what they want to catch, I can take them to the location to catch those fish." I couldn't do that 10 years ago, which I think they answered their own question. All right? My third point is that there is no approved long-term plan for development on the Greenway that adequately takes into consideration user safety, as well as the long-term protection of the public resource and its investment. The proposed development with 119 units and 261 beds will add at least another 200, probably more cars, to the S&amp;S Railroad Bed Road. Combine that with the traffic that will come in and out of CrossFit Gym, and you're increasing significantly the chances for a vehicle pedestrian or vehicle cyclist accident, even with modifying the proposed intersection, the infrastructure is not adequate to handle this additional traffic. Additionally, there are no regulations on buffer development, drainage, and other factors as pertains to protecting beauty of the Greenway. Now, the developer, David Pierce, he, this is nothing personal, I've gotten to know David pretty well in this process, and I respect him, and I like him. I have no reason to doubt the sincerity and good intentions of Mr. Pierce, but as we all know, money can become tight and promises are not always kept. So I would ask that you vote no and come up with a long-term plan for Greenway development.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak against?
Mr. Mayor? My name is Frankie Arcangelo, and I'm here as a citizen tonight. Basically, I'm for development, and I'm not an architect here in town, so that's part of my profession, and I just want to make sure that, you know, this is an asset for our community, kind of reiterating what Danny just said, and that we need to look at the whole S&amp;S Greenway by taking and looking at this piece, or this piece, or this piece, and trying to develop one at a time. I don't know if we're going to keep the intent of that beautiful area. We have one chance, the city, county has one chance to make this and keep this a beautiful place to be for activities that it was intended for. And I just want to ask, there's been a plan for the S&amp;S Greenway for intersections and beautification, and John, and I guess I would ask the engineers whether they have looked at the plan and decided whether or not we can do some of these items that are listed on the plan. You know, there's intersections and traffic calming measures, you know, that's the big thing. My children run on the Greenway and walk on the Greenway all the time, and if we have 1,000 cars an hour, and that brings us to another point. Has there been a traffic study for those intersections? And I, you know, looking at Quan, taking the kids to school in the morning, Quanah Road, there at that Railroad Bed, you know, you're good luck getting out of there and making a left-hand turn. It's hard to make a left-hand turn out of that road. So my main point is, there has been a study, it's a beautiful plan, it's a plan that the county paid for, let's take a look at that, and let's think about this whole Greenway as an asset, and how can we keep it beautiful and safe for everybody to enjoy, not only today, but 10, and 30, and 50 years down the road. Thank you.
Does anyone else here to speak against?
My name is Bob Plaskin, and I'm a citizen here who walks and jogs on that trail everywhere. And honestly, you know that development's going to happen, that's a given, but adding so many vacant in and out on those roads is just asking for trouble. I've so far, so good. A vacant place, I've only been nearly hit once. Most of the people do stop slow, allow the pedestrians to fill by, but it's inevitable. If you add 200 beds, my gosh, you're just asking for trouble, and I ask you to vote no against this.
Thank you. Mr. Carroll?
Is there anybody to go? Hello, everyone, I'm Carolyn Alvin, and I'm a citizen of City of Statesboro. I'd like to know how many people are here in support of the S&amp;S Greenway? If you could just real, raise your hand.
Support of the Greenway.
In support of the Greenway?
Yes.
Yeah, in support, how many people use the Greenway? Yeah, okay. So you can see that the Greenway has a large contingent of support. Last time we spoke, you charged me, and this community was trying to work with the developers to find a solution, and I have to say, we all worked really hard. We got together numerous times, just Danny Gleason and I and the developers, we all got excited about a number of plans that the community has that I have to hand out to you tonight, if you haven't already seen or received them, in terms of buffering and traffic intersections on the Greenway. We spoke with Mike Rollins, who developed the Greenway, knows a lot about Greenway issues, we spoke with Mike and the developers, we got together, the entire community, we spoke with all of you, we spoke with Mr. Neal, and through all these conversations, the same theme kept coming up, wow, that's a lot of traffic. That's 263 cars, 261 cars, if you multiply that over perhaps future developments, if each of those cars makes three, just three trips a day, that's a thousand, over a thousand intersections back and forth across the Greenway, and that's a lot of opportunity for people to get hurt. Now, as Danny and everybody before me said, we're not opposed to development. I actually want to live in a place much like the one David is proposing. I just feel like we're not ready yet. We don't have a plan. We don't have a plan to deal with the traffic that this- We don't have a plan to deal with the traffic that this situation is going to create. And I think that's going to cause problems for the community, it's going to cause problems for the greenway, and it's going to cause problems for the people who live in this development. I think it's essential, as somebody said, in support of the project, that we spend a lot of city money to put in infrastructure for development. That's great. Now we need to spend a little time and effort putting in money for a transportation plan. The entire area from Quanah to Highway eighty to Burke Halter is open for development. That's been decided. But we have no plan for how we're going to deal with the increased density of traffic. It's already backed up there. There are multiple churches. People can't get up and down Quanah Road. People who live at Beacon Place have said they can't get out onto the road to get to work. It's just really a mess. And to me, we're putting the cart before the horse with this situation. We need to plan for what we're going to do with the traffic before we start building more. I have ideas for how to do that, if you are interested.
Is there anything else we can speak against?
I'm not a public speaker, so forgive me for jittery. My name is Harry Sandvall. I'm a citizen here in Statesboro. I use the greenway at least twice a week, if not more. I think it's a huge asset to this town, and the pristine quality of it is one of the reasons I love it so much. The thought of having multiple entrances to a facility, or to a place like Beacon Place, I think it would diminish the value of the trail extensively. You know, there are very few places along the trail that you need to slow down and really watch your surroundings. That's why it's great. You can walk freely. You don't need to always have your wits about you so much. But at Beacon Place, absolutely, I slow down, I look around. As this gentleman back here said, I have only had a few close calls so far, but I have had close calls, and I think that adding more and more facilities like the one up here would only make it more and more dangerous. I'm a relatively new citizen to this town, and this trail is a huge draw for, you know, a reason why I would want to move some, move here, just because, you know, I want this outdoor space, and I want it to be protected and maintained with some laundry. Thank you.
Thank you. And you did a good job. Is there anyone else to speak against?
Council? Mike Rollins, Director of Parks and Recreation. And I'm not here to speak against as much as land, as a form of information. When the greenway was developed, when we first started talking about the greenway, basically back in about two thousand and eight and two thousand and nine, the major issue was, at least down Railroad Bed Road, what was going to happen? We acquired the land, it was already county-owned, and decided to go ahead and pave the road at the same time, because of the form of safety for those people who were driving, as well as the pedestrians. And at that time, there were meetings between members of the city staff and county staff to look at zoning issues and how we might handle that long-term, because we knew that development was going to occur at some time. But the key thing is safety and handling the vehicular traffic that's going to be on Railroad Bed Road. And we all know that, basically, that road is not set up for large numbers of cars. It was never developed. It was actually set up for, basically, the way it was originally zoned. And I think there was a reason for that. It was to eliminate and to cut down on the number of crossings and the number of individual cars would be crossing the greenway, because that's where your point of contact is for a pedestrian and/or a vehicle. And when you put in multifamily development on a roadway that's not set up for that, you're basically setting up a situation that certainly can create something that we don't, that none of us will see. And so, long-term, my concern is, if we continue to do multifamily development and/or commercial development down our roadway, we're going to destroy not only the public asset that we have, but we're also going to create a situation where, that people won't want to use it anymore. They won't use it because of the safety issue. And we've got plenty of places in this community where we can do commercial development. And when you create a commercial development, as well as multifamily, you create a large number of cars. And we talked about just the number of cars at Beacon Place that come in and out of there every day. Well, again, this multifamily development, plus we've already added a commercial development, easily you're probably talking about a thousand cars a day at that one location, or maybe anywhere between five hundred and a thousand trips a day coming across that greenway. And so if you continue to develop, as we continue to develop down, and we know there's going to be developers that want to develop, because obviously, if you have water and sewer there, it's prime for that. You have paved highway or paved roadway. So I just encourage you, as a council and as city staff, to work with us at the county, and also, long-term, to look at how we're going to have a future development down Railroad Bed Road. Because if not, we are going to have a recipe for failure. We'll have a recipe for a fatality, which none of us will see. And I think it's something we certainly need to be concerned about. And I think there are copies. If you don't have a copy of the corridor design guidelines, we have those. And I have already passed along, I think Frank and some of the, and I know the Jeff, I don't know if he knows the recipe, but we do have those, and we are, at any time, we'll have set out a D and look at how we can modify those, if we can modify them, but at least get them in a position where we can use them for future development.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John? We're doing a local council discussion. Is there anyone else to speak against?
My name is Frank Hooper. I'm a resident of Beacon Place, resident of Statesboro, and also an avid biker and walker, and I use that trail multiple times a week, multiple times a day. A couple of points that I haven't heard is, one, there's quite a bit of density on that road already, so it's not just additional cars, but it's also the initial people that are going to be using it, that are there. And because I do bike on it as well as run on it, biking even has a higher risk than it does just the walking, because you're traveling faster. So getting more cars and more people there are really going to make it a most inaccessible device. So part of what needs to happen on that is extend the trail, because you're going to get quite a density of people, because it's only like a two mile, two and a half miles from, what is that, Gentry, as they go all the way down to where the trail ends at. So I think part of the plan needs to be to extend it, and that's going to reduce the density of the people on the trail that are going to be on that part of it. If you're going to go forward with a development there, you need to think about developing the trail further out as well.
Hi, my name is Jason Evans, and I'm an avid biker as well. I use the trail on a daily basis. I drive, I ride my bike approximately twelve to fifteen miles a day on the trail as it currently stands. The reason that I drive or ride my bike on the trail is because it's the safest place in the county to do that. I mean, it's hands-down the safest place. I think with things like this, you're absolutely, inevitably, there's going to be a fatality or harm to someone. So, again, from a person that uses the trail no less than four or five times a week, I would ask that you really think about the potential for harm for people who actually use the trail.
Thank you. Anybody else who wants?
Hi, my name is Erin Artson. I just wanted to say a couple words on behalf of fellow graduate students and other students at Georgia Southern. I know a lot of the graduate students use the trail for running and biking and walking their dogs, and kind of as an outlet from grad school, which can be stressful, getting off campus. And there's really not a lot of outdoor recreational areas to do activities, do things with friends around Statesboro besides the greenway. And on top of that, I do see a lot of undergraduates there, too. It's close to campus, so people can get there easily. The other thing that I wanted to say is that at the Friends of the Greenway meeting we had, we were brainstorming different ways to promote the greenway, things we could do there, different events that would help the community, such as education, teaching either children, or even some classes from the university, taking undergrads out there to learn about wildlife or plants. Now, a development of that density, even if there is a buffer, it's still going to be degrading a lot of habitat, and as much as you try to mitigate that, it's going to be reducing the amount of wildlife, plants, et cetera, in that area, and it's going to reduce the integrity and, I think, the value of the greenway for not only recreation and exercise, but also public education, which I think would be a very sad loss.
Anybody else who wants?
Hello, everybody. My name is Dr. Chakwong God. I'm a friend of the greenway. I run there multiple times a week, sometimes multiple times a day. I contribute my own wellness, with as mental health, to my town at the greenway. In fact, I see a lot of people here that I've never met, but they wave at me at the greenway when they see me. So I do enjoy that part, and even though I used to use the greenway, I understand everything everybody's saying out here. I'm also an environmentalist, and I know there's a certain amount of wetland in that area. Like you said, we can mitigate the environment, but once we lose it, we lose it. There's a lot of opportunities out there for us as leaders of sustainability. Almost every activity that I come out here in town, I see our efforts in sustainability, not just in the schools, in the First Fridays, all those type of things are important, and we can be leaders in terms of that development, even in terms of sustainable development. So we could think about it not just as users, because recreation, we enjoy it, but we have a habit that happens that is irreplaceable. When we think of times of wetlands as waste, but once we lose them, we're not going to get them back. Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak against?
My name is Peter Tusslers. I use the greenway on a regular basis, a couple times a week, and I'm opposed to this development, because it would destroy what's a really unique asset in the county. I can run or ride my bike on pretty much any road, but this is the only road that has a limited amount of traffic. It's quiet, it's peaceful, it's, you know, beautiful farms and woods, and it's a nice place to get out and not have to worry about traffic and stop signs and red lights and so on. So, as development continues, I don't mind single-family homes, but on this chunk of the trail, and as it moves further towards Brooklyn, maybe beyond, I'd like you to consider a plan that restricts the density of development, so that the spirit of the trail as a place that's kind of a relaxing, enjoyable environment for recreation can be maintained. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak against? Is there anyone who wants to speak for Oregon?
My name is David Pierce, Mayor, City Council. Some of the concerns, the bullet kind of guidelines, that is one concern that we've heard a lot about. We've actually gone above and beyond the bullet kind of guidelines. They're calling for a fifteen-foot buffer. We've got a total of thirty-four foot, plus the fifteen-foot buffer, which gives us forty-nine. The wetlands, there's been a lot of concern about the wetlands. We can't touch weapons without mitigation. We have done no mitigation. We are not touching any of the weapons. Any of the sewer runoff, drainwater and everything sits in the detention pond, and then it goes into the wetlands at a rate no more than what is happening right now. The, from Gentilly, I believe the walking trail, the green space starts at Gentilly and goes to Victoria Rushing. From Gentilly all the way to Quanah, I think most of that is wetlands. It cannot be developed without a great deal of, that's a huge piece of green space, right in the middle of Statesboro, Georgia. It goes from Howard Lumber all the way to Gentilly. And we're going to have development. We need development to pay for infrastructure, and this is how we're going to do it.
First, I'd like to thank David and Gary Owen for working so hard to kind of create a development that does reflect some of the spirit of the greenway again. I don't think any of us are against development. I think we need to find a solution that addresses the traffic problems and the intersection problems that we're going to have. And so I would propose that before we do any sort of development, we consider adopting the following, which would just be good practice, not just for this development, but for development in the future, because this land is our community's resource, it's our city's future, and once it's built, it's built. So we want to do it right. So, number one, to ensure public safety, the city will adopt the S and S Greenway Corridor Design Guidelines that you have in front of you. These are the guidelines that Mike was talking about. They address the buffer that everybody's talking about, that David, I have to say, we got all excited about, you know, the buffer and some possibilities for intersections. And those, that intersection is a concern to David, and some of the things that are in those guidelines might be helpful in resolving the situation now and in the future. But I don't think that we should have a development until we decide how we're going to deal with those things. I think, number two, the city and county have to notify each other regarding issues that impact the greenway and adjacent properties. There seems to be a lack of communication that would, it would really help if we can improve that and kind of work together to solve problems. For public safety reasons, the city and county will further, will limit more interceptions with the greenway, so that we can have the straight corridor, the uninterrupted corridor of public safety that everybody values so much, as you've heard tonight. I think that for this development, the traffic study typically required should be conducted so that, and the findings addressed, so that we can address the traffic of this development. I think that's a significant issue, as you've seen. I think that all the developers in the future must, and now, must agree that dumpsters, pumping stations, storage, and whatnot be located distant from the greenway and screened from the greenway. Right now, there's one sitting right out on the greenway. There's a huge amount of erosion that comes out on the greenway, and it's degrading that investment. For public safety and for impact on our resources, the city and county must not approve any development without mitigating the impact of thousands of additional car trips on roads and on the greenway. If you just do the simple math of those two hundred and sixty-two cars, multiply that by three times a day, and if there are future developments, multiply that all the way down the road, and we have a huge traffic problem. What we have is fair road, where there's intersections of Food World, Dunkin' Donuts, you know, Zaxby's, all the way down. And number seven, and this is the most important, is that the city and county must create a comprehensive, complete streets transportation plan in the area bounded by Quanah Road, Burke Halter, and Highway eighty-eight. That encompasses that whole region, complete streets, addresses safe crossings and multiple alternative transportation options. Thank you. And I have a copy of this article.
Anyone else for Oregon?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make one brief comment. As Mr. Neal pointed out, this property is owned combination RTN and RE. I went through and I've not done a complete design, but taken the best available information I have. I use the whole nineteen point two acres, let's include the wetlands. I have a range of already, you know, it's a fifty, a best of acres, twenty-seven, six and ninety-six lots, if you take that many houses. If you build four bedrooms per house, that would yield between three hundred and three hundred and sixty beds, as it is current in the zone. I'll take the wetlands out, we use only sixteen acres. I have a yield of sixty to I think you have the infrastructure in place, and I think there are like safety measures, which you've done with one exit and one entrance, future safety measures later. But I appreciate your thought and vote for for this project. Thank you.
Say your name for the record.
Keely Fennell.
I agree with everything you just said, but I would also say that we can say, you can say yes, but every time you say yes, it gets harder to say no. And I think at some point, we have to stop, and we have to say no, and we have to look at it, and we have to come up with a comprehensive plan, and it will be a win-win for everybody. Otherwise, we're just going to end up with a hodgepodge of construction down the Greenway, which then again, people won't be asking to live on the Greenway anymore. It won't be attractive to people to use. So that's my line.
All right. Thank you. All right. Is the motion closed for hearing? Is there a second? Sure. All right. All those in favor?
I have it.
All right. At this point, we'd now like to ask the council to adjourn to discussion. Is there any discussion on the matter, the council?
Just mayor.
Councilman Duke?
Thank you. I'd like to call Mike Ross back up to the actual question, please.
Mike Ross, if you would approach.
Yes, sir. Mike, first of all, I'm thinking that also it's a job in the county of recreation and park. Thank you so much. Mike, you know, I also saw county planning zoning, and I was a little embarrassed today when I first saw this SNS Greenway Corridor Design Guidelines and realized I hadn't seen this. Would you please tell everyone when the city was given, did you notice or given that?
About 2009, eight or nine. It's been a long time ago. Yeah, because that's when their Rex developed, in 2008, I think. 2008 or nine, that's when we had our initial conversation regarding what we were going to do with the Greenway and the design guidelines that were going to be used for the roadway. Really, as a traffic calming measure, it separated. I don't know that that's solved the question. I think we still like Rex Tractor sometimes. But that was the reason for separating the roadway, was to create a slower transition for people that were going from Kowana Road to the Five Points area.
You haven't had a chance to look at this yet. Does this include the traffic study?
No, there was no traffic, there's been no traffic study done, because at the time, there was no development on the roadway. So traffic studies typically are done in concert with development, at least in most cases. And so I think whenever Beacon Place was developed, I don't think there was traffic studied. And so I think it was just developed, and then, you know, we're council board, we got that.
The county recently held an extension period. Was, is there a timeline developed for extending the Greenway to Brooklyn yet?
Well, we hope to know, we hope to know about our TAP grant sometime between now and Christmas. And if we are approved with that grant, then we will proceed immediately into design and probably within 18 months be fully developed, hopefully, because they're trying to fast-track most of those projects a lot more than what they used to be. It used to be, it should be a three- or four-year development timeframe involving federal regulations. But those have changed. And if we do not get the TAP grant, we still have approximately $1.8 million in transportation enhancement fund, or transportation funds through the Transportation SPOS, T-SPOS program that we use for Greenway development. So we could literally go ahead, we probably wouldn't do all the amenities, such as the trailhead, but we would be able to do a significant amount of trail development all the way to Brooklyn.
Are you going to be able to tie in that with this current trail, given the traffic flow around Burke Halter?
Yes, sir. What we will do, we've already got a plan in place to handle. We can probably include some more signaling there with the roundabout, at least some safety signaling. Roundabouts are, I mean, anybody's been, anybody's been to Hilton Head knows that there's transient bikers and walkers and runners that utilize those roadways and those roundabouts. And more than anything, it's a, it's a training process for the, for the vehicle traffic and for their users, requires safety and security on both parts. It's not something that is going to come naturally here, because we only have two roundabouts, and we just recently got them. So people have to learn about how to respond to the pedestrian and light traffic as well. So, but I don't, you know, that would just be a period of time, I think, to take care of that issue. Yes, sir?
When this study was done of the, all of the land, it not been extended to the city in my dream?
That's correct. Yeah, that was prior to that issue.
And the trail didn't actually get built to what, 13, 14?
No, the trail was built, we finished in 2011.
2011?
Yes, sir.
Mike, real quick, so many times we do what someone else already done, did you use a model for this Greenway than other cities?
Well, at the time, developing Greenways on retired railroad rightaways was a big thing. Any of you have heard of the Silver Comet Trail in Atlanta? It goes from there to the, next to the state line. That was on a, on an abandoned railroad rightaway. And so there's a lot of trail developments that's taking place, and especially now that the state transportation, or federal transportation acts actually puts funding, sets aside funding for local governments to utilize monies to develop trails. That didn't used to be that way, but beginning in about 2005, that began. And so since then, a lot of funds have been appropriated back to local governments to do that, and we've been able, we were able to secure a couple of federal grants and several state grants to help us with what we've already developed, and hopefully we'll be able to continue to do that.
That Silver Comet Trail in Atlanta has many previous railway crossings with inward traffic. How did they handle that?
Well, I mean, you handle it with, you handle it with safety signal, like we have in Kowana Road, and you handle it in a lot of cases with public education. If you are in areas that have a high frequency of pedestrians, and again, those areas like Hilton Head and those areas like that, it requires a public education, and over a period of time, people begin to realize that pedestrians first have a rightaway and crossing. And over a period of time, they used to, I mean, there was a very prominent businessman that had a situation in Hilton Head just recently. That was on the news, and a lot of people saw that, I'm sure, where he had had an accident at an intersection with a pedestrian, and it was a bad situation. But, you know, it's just something we have to continue to work with, whether this development or others have, and we have issues at Beacon Place, and we just need to continue to work with. And again, I think that's where we all need to work together, whether that's through the police department, or with the developers and these, and owners and operators of these multifamily developments, so that we don't have those issues. But even today, you said at Beacon Place and watch it, you'll see the, you'll see the issues that I'm talking about, where people, they totally don't worry about the stop sign, they drive right across the trail, and will stop right there, and they will make their left turn or right turn, and they don't stop. They just don't. Because they, in most cases, they're used to going to the roadway to make their turn and stop, and that's where they stop. Yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going out. And hearing all this and having worked with various members of development as representing District Five with what's occurring, it's obvious to me that the losses of the Greenway and the vehicle traffic of all the Greenways is a prime concern for safety and the protection preservation of the Greenway. Statesboro is very unique to have this, I'll agree. I've been more traveling than most people this year, and I have seen tremendous bike trails, walk trails, particularly in Europe, where that becomes an amazing asset. This community was recently honored for the Blue Island Mission, very important for the blind, wading, tailed trail. And now we are talking about the preservation of one of the city's most important assets. I believe we have it all, but it's all before that fact that it's not a traffic study. Most developments of this size do require a traffic impact study. But in the city, we don't have this many developments of this size due to the limits. We may need one in this particular case. If not for this development to be restricted, that this be the last development that we will consider along the Greenway till we develop an alternate route off of the Greenway. And I've talked to people, and trying to make a headway and making that happen, some folks who will be profitable about that. It's obvious concern. These are good builders and developers and engineers. I don't have any doubts or reservations about what they're doing as a developer, regarding the quality of their work. What I'm trying to find a balance with, in considering this in my district, is the impact of preservation of the trail. I can assure that that doesn't happen. At this point, I'm struggling with that. And I just say it every one year, and each of you. And I have, I don't have that answer as of this moment. I don't know what that means, because we see a lot of these people invested money and all this, I hate to hold them up. I don't want to do that. I like this development. True, it is a density, identity development. It's easy to see that. But we do need housing in this community, even housing, that's got the amenities that this will have. They've got a training center right there at them, it's close to school. And if we solve some of these other transportation issues, like the intersection of Burke Halter and Fair Road, the non-exit off Kowana Road, with, off Veterans Parkway, I've currently got an initiative with GDOT to try to solve that particular problem, so that we have a 66% decrease in first responder time to both the school and now public safety and schools, all the political hot button. And yet, an exit right in, right out, off of Veterans Parkway, would get our law enforcement and ambulances to South Zeta or our school in two-thirds less time. So these are all issues that affect this decision on the trail. And I'm just going to have to give it over to you, as I'm confused about this particular situation as it exists at this moment. I had not seen this until today and haven't had time to look at it.
Is there any further discussion, Mike?
And that's just a previous left word?
Yes, sir.
Have you ever stood in the SNS Greenway Corridor Design?
Yes, sir.
You got a chance to look at it?
Yes, sir.
Any comments on it?
Uh, I think that the only comment I had on it was the 15-foot buffer that the bullet county's calling. You may want to increase that buffer if the county, so, and then the, we've talked about, I think whenever you look in there, some of the intersections and stuff, they have the dimpling for the, which is more, and in my understanding, is more for the handicap, ADA, blind, and stuff like that, is why you put the dimples into the concrete. Councilman, I would have to do further study to be of any assistance in a better plan.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, is there any other further stuff, any comment section?
I think David's being a car driving, they're too fast out there. We need to certainly kind of slow it down. Whether anything is built.
That would be us. That would be, that would be the government doing something about enhancing common measures. Just something to slow it down. I know my wife wanted to go right over. And roadway, you separate it from bikers. I felt the bikers were a problem, or, or, yeah, I, I felt that they could be in danger by wild drivers.
I can't hear you.
I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. The, um, traffic is entirely too fast on the entire railroad bit road. We need to make something about slowing it down. I'm not sure any developer would want to, would want to develop anything with town. I think it should be slowed down. I believe cars and cycles, cyclists and, uh, uh, destroyers are too close together. They need to be, um, not separated, but they need to be protected. Sir?
I just would like to point out that the city's own zoning language says this, that R4, which is high-density residential district, and this, and this is a denser development than R4, it says that the proposed development will constitute a residential environment of sustained desirability and stability, and not produce a volume of traffic in excess of the capacity for which access streets are designed. That's the language the city uses to evaluate this. I just think we are in a situation that this, this type of development can't meet this goal.
Any further questions, Bob?
I'd like to give to the gentleman, if you'd like to give your name, who lives in Beacon Place, that rides and runs, correct?
Yeah.
Does that, does where you live, I'm putting you on the spot, because you're kind of certainly both arenas, correct?
That's right.
How, respond to how this, how do you see Beacon Place affecting it? You, you maybe talked a little bit about it before, but could things be done to allow a Beacon Place or development such as the one that these, these folks have proposed? In your mind, as a learner, a biker, as a learner, could it work? You keep talking about it could work, but how does it work from your perspective?
You mean in terms of having another development? Having another development there? Well, I like what you said about separating the runners and the bikers, so that's, that's a problem, as the density increases on that road, that it does become more dangerous for both parties. And we don't have any, any posted rules, other than someone deals with someone else, but there's probably some educational opportunities there. So I'm a little worried that the new development comes in, that the density reaches a point where it is dangerous on a daily basis. I know as a resident and a biker and a runner, I'm very aware when I cross, for that, when I cross the trail, of people coming, but it is a problem at night if the people aren't wearing reflective clothing, or if there are no lights shining down on them, that it's really hard to see any walkers or runners or bikers. I think some people do use it at night. When I ride at night, I have blinking lights on my bike, so people can see it, but not everyone does. Not all the walkers wear blinking stuff, so you can see them. So even now, some things could be done to improve the safety, and the lights are a sensitive issue. You don't want too many, you don't want, but you need to be able to see, at least in those intersection areas. Of course, along the trail, we would need them, but on the intersections, you definitely need to have them lighted, and perhaps another signal that would help mitigate potential collisions with bikes and the cars. So as it stands now, there's some improvements that could be made. And with another development there. Well, I like what you said about separating the runners and the bikers, so that's, that's a problem as the density increases on that road, that it does become more dangerous for both parties. And we don't have any, any posted rules other than someone deals with someone else, but there's probably some educational opportunities there. So, I'm a little worried that if the new development comes in, that the density reaches a point where, uh, it is dangerous on a daily basis. I know as a resident and a biker and a runner, I'm very aware when I cross, for that, when I cross the trail, of people coming, but it is a problem at night if the people aren't wearing reflective clothing, or if, uh, there are no lights shining down on them, that it's really hard to see any, any walkers or runners or bikers. I think some people do use it at night. When I ride at night, I have blinking lights on my bike, so people can see it, but not everyone does. Not all the walkers wear blinking stuff so you can see them. So even now, some things could be done to improve in the safety, and the lights are a sensitive issue. You don't want too many, you don't want, but you need to be able to see at least in those intersection areas. Of course, along the trail, we wouldn't need them, but on the intersections, you definitely need to have them lighted and perhaps other signal that would help mitigate potential collisions with bikes and the cars. As it stands now, there's some improvements that could be made. And with another development, it's just going to get worse. So, yeah, let's, let's get it extended to Brooklyn, I think that will help a lot, because not everyone's French on just a couple miles of trail.
Mr. Mayor, I said earlier that I was a little confused. Let me make one thing very clear. I'm not confused about the need for doing the right thing here. What I can see is if we approve this, we need to have a moratorium on any further development along the trail until we solve these infrastructure issues. I've seen the vehicle count totals obtained so far, whereas the i- ideal total would be zero car count crossings, compared to that, but that's not possible. We do have, you know, the infrastructure that's put there for development, but we do need to solve this. So in the absence of these solutions at this meeting tonight, whether than helping developers up, we've got conditions, and ask, you know, if this delay for that reason, the conditions to be brought forward, I would like to advise everyone in the room that I'm going to be pushing hard, I've got to find out how to do it, for a moratorium on any further development along the suspended road until we do solve the issue of the government tonight. One thing is going to be a reliever route to move traffic off this suspended road. And another thing will be how to handle any crossings in better safety with this guidelines that the county has for their trail, that they maintain, that's theirs, it's not ours, it's the county's. Thank you.
Is there any further conversation, a question, my counsel?
Rick, have you looked at these?
Yeah, I got a copy of them Thursday. They're kind of, they're personal, throughout the area, I mean, I guess.
There's some things in here for Zone C, minimum of 2,000 feet from the intersection.
Microphone please.
It says, um, Zone C, all new major intersections, minimum of 2,000 feet from the major intersection. Are we meeting those type of guidelines, do you know?
Um, we're pretty close. I mean, the biggest thing is with that, um, we have, on this development especially, have limited access. So there's one access for the parcel to the left here and for the two drives for the residential development.
I mean, as compared to the entrance from Beacon Place, is this?
I'm not certain on that.
Of course, that's already there, so it doesn't matter. I mean, all I know is we, we, we can't stop development because we do need some more residents here in Statesboro, but at the same time, we have to preserve the Greenway. All you got to do is look at the Beltway and get it, and realize that that is what is driving the value of this property. And, and I think everybody here has already pointed out, the key, the key to the, the Greenway, yeah, it's nice to have the buffer and everything else, but the, the key really is that unimpeded pedestrian traffic, which is, I understand the crossings, but I'll be honest with you, when you've got 119 units, you're looking at 200 cars, you're talking eight trips a day, you're looking at 1600, 1500 car trips a day. And it's not just the crossings now. I mean, now you have all that traffic running right alongside that, that trail that has no, there's no separation. I mean, if somebody sneezes and jerks the wheel, there's no, there's no trees, there's no buffer, no nothing. So, I mean, it's not just the cut-ins, we can solve that problem, you still have the problem of volume of people along that road, not to mention that further out the county is still developing property right around five points or new developments going in. So that just means more traffic through that whole area too, so. Um, I'm not, I, I mean, uh, for me, I, I have to go with the folks that are suggesting that we have some Greenway guidelines for development. Um, what that means moving forward, I, I'm not sure. I don't think we necessarily have to deny this tonight, but we've got to figure out a, a way to, to implement some things that can apply to this development and all developments moving forward, so, and your concern. Because this is, we got to face it, this is a growth area. I mean, look what happened when we put the water out there. Church, school, church, development, development. This is a growing area. We can't deny that growth is going towards Brooklyn and Brooklyn is growing towards us. So this is going to be quick, and this is not going to be a nice little world with these properties, it's just not. So we got to figure out how we can make it development friendly and keep the Greenway intact, because that is going to what keeps the property values in that area up and keep gentlemen, like yourself, from moving into, uh, moving into the area, because you have a, a trail that ends up being not used. And that's worse than not having a trail. There you go.
Any further questions or comments, my counsel?
Can I ask a question? May I ask a question? I wonder if there isn't a solution. Where, may I come? I need to graduate with the zoning map. This is the area that we're talking about. I'm in Houston, by the way, and, um, we talk with the builder as well. We're talking about, I mean, one of the biggest concerns here is safety and cutting into the Greenway. But if we don't cut into the Greenway, if he has the development and instead comes out the back door, this is your city, land here, this is his development, and he come out this back way between this subdivision, which is still city land, and have the road here with traffic like Kiwanah or Greenup Road down to Burka. In other words, with cost and with his development come out the back door, you'll cross the Greenway, then he still has this development access to city resources. Does that make sense? I'm sorry I hit my back and it's hard to draw. Is that a possibility?
Frank, yes or no?
That's John's question.
I just want to, on your question, if you come out to the south, if you have a significant wetness area to cross, you have two additional property units that you have to, to give out of there, from, from, to Long Road. At this point, I would say, we have a pursuit to help there.
Not to mention Debbie, the, the cut is already there, you can't just block it off.
No, the cut, there's no cut.
No, it's not.
For the gym, it's already?
Yes, it is.
No?
The cut is there and it also.
Uh, it's already there. It's for the gym, you can't get the gym otherwise.
Well, they were going to share a cut. And so what I'm saying is, okay, keep that cut going out the back door.
Even if you do, people will still be able to access the trail. So you, you don't, you don't shut that down. You, you just divert it.
If they can only access the trail to pedestrian traffic, but then use that joint road coming out the back door, either here to Kiwanah or straight down to Burka.
That joint road already crosses from there.
Okay, well, yeah, I didn't think that had been built, but I thought that's what you're trying to do.
No, the, the property on the, uh, right next to it, the, the road that goes in between, that's already been, that's already been approved.
We are at a State Board, this is for council discussion. So this council has a specific question, if anyone's in the audience, um, if they need to begin to move forward. So if there is any further, uh, questions or commentary, my counsel. Seeing that, that there is none, is there a motion to approve? Is there a motion to deny? All right, is there a second?
What was the motion?
To approve. Is there a second? Seeing that there is no second, is there a motion to deny? Seeing that there is no motion, uh, is the second, is it counted up in the mayor at this point, so that there is a no vote by counsel? All right, we'll move on to which an item. Set.
You have two minutes to allow both of you to make your case.
He's already have the seat. I'm just wondering how he lost it. I'm just talking to you. The view is mad.
We'll call again back to order. Agenda item seven, public hearing in consideration of motion to approve the application, RZ18-08-02, BBT-Aken LP, request a zoning map amendment of 49.65 acres, a portion of the larger 225.45 acre tract located on Veterans Memorial Parkway and Old Register Road from R40 to the commercial retail zoning district, a portion of the commercial retail center. Uh, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second? I was in favor. Right front, if you will.
Uh, yes, sir, mayor. It's RZ18-08-02 is a zoning map amendment request that's located at Old Register Road and Veterans Memorial Parkway. The request specifically is for an amendment from R40, single-family residential to commercial retail district. The applicant is BBT-Aken LP. The owners are Aken's J. Edward Farms Limited. The applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment from the R40, single-family residential zoning district to the CR, commercial retail zoning district, in order to develop a commercial retail center which is not allowed to be turned on. As you know, this is part of the, um, state soccer stadium development. Uh, that, the stadium will be actually in that little circular area just outside of this parcel. Uh, this is a separate parcel, um, outside of that, that part of the stadium development. And you see it highlighted at R40. Again, this is looking east from the subject site, currently undeveloped land. The second one is looking north along Old Register Road, the eastern boundary of the site. Again, looking south along Old Register Road, and then of course, looking up and down the Fletcher Memorial Parkway. This is some of the adjoining properties that are above this, of course, the clubhouse entertainment center and the automotive center across the street. This is the intersection, uh, looking across at the recreation center at George Southern. You see the highlighted boundaries of the parcel, the question is 49.65 acres, the dark outline of the boundaries. Staff did recommend approval of the zoning map amendment with the following conditions as stated. A, possible uses shall be restricted to those uses first permissible by right to the central business district of the city of Statesboro, as well as healthcare facilities including hospitals and nursing homes. B, site plan approval, C, traffic analysis to be submitted to this plan. Scheduled meeting held on September 4th, 2:00 p.m. At 5:00 p.m., the planning commission voted by vote to approve the application, RZ18-02, with the staff recommendation and conditions.
Anyone speak for us?
Again, counsel, my name is John Dobson. I promise I'll be brief. It won't take that long. As usual, I covered everything, uh, the intent, this to develop a commercial retail district, and conjunctions, and other ongoing things in, in this area. Mr. Manassas was here, he knows as well, will answer any questions that you may have, we would ask for your support.
Thank you, John. Why is anyone not just speak for a project?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Darren Dan's counsel, we're part of the development group here. This is the site that was anticipated in the recent TAD that was passed. We've been very public about what will be here. This particular property joins where the soccer stadium will be replacing our golf rinks, which we did close last week in anticipation for this. Um, we've been very open about the regional grocery store that'll, um, arrive here, about the new road that will intersect with, um, the new road that's already depicted on there, and, and several other commercial, you know, activities. As I said, the TAD anticipated it, this is our formal process, we give it as an A J.
Anybody else who can speak for? Is there anybody here to speak against? Is there anyone who can speak for or against? Is there a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
All right, all of us in favor?
Hi.
All right. Uh, any council discussion?
Let's do it.
Seeing that there is none, uh, is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Sir?
Whatever you want.
All right. Just, I'm ready to assume. All right, all of us in favor?
Hi.
Now, now, for agenda item. Public hearing in consideration of motion to approve. Public hearing in consideration of motion to approve. Application RZ18-08-01, deep south property, request a zoning map amendment of 13.96 acres of property, located at 316 Fletcher Drive from the R20, single-family residential to the R4, high-density residential zoning district, in order to develop a multifamily triplex community or combination of possible addressed 316 Fletcher Drive and Fletcher Drive. Um, is there a motion to open here? So, is there a second? All of us in favor?
Hi.
Frank, if you will, if I can.
Uh, yes, sir, mayor. It's RZ18-08-01, is a zoning map amendment request for 316 Fletcher Drive. Uh, the request is for a zoning map amendment from R20, single-family residential to R4, high-density residential. The request is for a zoning map amendment from R twenty, single-family residential to R four, high-density residential district. The applicant is Deep South Properties and the owners are Mini Bay Love, New Core, E K L, and Alvin D. Grant Senior. This property contains thirteen point nine six acres. Specifically, the proposal is a request for a zoning map amendment from R thirty, single-family residential zoning district to the R four, high-density residential zoning district in order to develop a multifamily triplex community consisting of forty-five three-bedroom units, one hundred and thirty-five bedrooms total, which is not allowed in the current zoning district. This property is located at the intersection of Fletcher and Matthews area, you see it's actually two separate parcels held under one ownership. Also noted in the back or the lower southern portion of this lot is a large pond in some way that's there. This is looking east boundary, subject site Fletcher Drive, and then northern boundary of the subject site Fletcher Drive as well at the railroad. These are some of the surrounding properties in the area. This is the site in particular with the little white building on top picture, and then on the lower picture are some storage units across the street. Again, looking east along Fletcher and south along Fletcher, and you'll see that's the property and the pond in the visit there. That's a little bit better picture of the pond in the back of the property and the storage units across the street. This is the site planning question, as you see, there's not a lot of developable property on this property. Although the parcel is large, the property for development is somewhat small, and you'll see the boundaries of the wetlands and again, that pond is what. So, staff recommended disapproval of the zoning map amendment. The applicant's proposed use will not be compatible with the surrounding amenities. Additionally, the requested zoning change does not adhere to the Statesboro comprehensive master plan in regards to the future development map and the subject site's character area. If approved, the traffic study analysis will be required. Additionally, the fire department has conducted a preliminary review of the conceptual plan dated on two of twenty-eight, two thousand and eighteen, and the following general notes and observations are concerned from the review. Number one, no secondary point of degress is shown by the applicant's conceptual plan. Two, the fire hydrant installation required for the rear portion of this development, fire hydrant will be required for the rear portion of the development site. And three, current travel distance from the hydrant to some of the proposed buildings exceeds more than five hundred feet. Higher location and travel distances, exterior of all buildings shall be less than five hundred feet. If the fire department connection is installed, hydrant shall be installed a hundred feet of F T C. At the regularly scheduled meeting held on September fourth, two eighteen, at five P M, the planning commission voted five vote to disapprove this application. And then, let's move here again to represent both sides.
Thank you, Frank. Is there anyone, anyone here to speak for the development?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman David Hirdes, thanks, Reddick Associates. Frank summed up the general idea of the project and surrounding areas. I'll start with the fire department comments. The comments they made are really rather typical, the type of development usually you can see till the early stage. We've looked at it as no problem addressing any of these all of those. The second entrance will be the most challenging, but you know, look at it, we've got room to move units around, we're not cramming as many units on this parcel for sure. So, we certainly got some room to shift around, get another entrance, that's not a problem. At the planning commission meeting, some of the opposition worried about safety, that pond, the railroad tracks nearby. This certainly isn't the first development in Statesboro, Little County, or else in the country, or for that matter, to your bodies of water, railroad tracks. I understand a certain concern regarding, you know, some myself, I'm absolutely a technology developer, but this is what has to be done. The lake south, District One of Lee, there's body of water with houses all the way around it. Mill Creek Park, walking trails all the way around, bodies of water, Whispering Vine subdivision, backs up the railroad tracks, as do the other older parts of town. So, it's about a concern, but it's not an unprecedented. This particular parcel, I think it serves as a transitional zone because there's, to the east or to the west, rather, there's single-family residential. To the east, you have light industrial, and maybe a large part of why I'm looking to develop here as a single-family. So, I think having an R four for something a little more dense provides a good opportunity to develop something here, although it may continue to sit vacant as it has. We all know, everyone up here knows, that single-family residential has been hard to come by in City Statesboro, it's tough to develop here right now in that particular classification. Everything seems to go more dense, more dense, whereas just outside the city limits, there's several single-family residential subdivisions starting to develop and start to move. Anyway, that's the reasoned case in a nutshell, we have to answer the questions of council or opposition.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak for? Is there anyone here to speak against?
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm Leo Sable. I live at three hundred Fletcher Drive, which is just down the street from the proposed project. I'm here not only to represent myself, but the Fletcher Neighborhood Association. The Fletcher neighborhood is one of the oldest developments in the city of Statesboro dating back to the early fifties, with all single-family homes. I've lived there long enough to see three generations who are up there. This proposal would increase the population on a very small amount of acreage. There are thirteen acres there on that plot, but more than half of that is either a pond or wetlands. They're proposing a project which would place so many people there, probably upwards of a hundred and eighty to two hundred people in housing with three bedrooms. So, you're going to have at least four to five people in each housing. In this situation, you would probably also have two vehicles per family. The only exit or access to this property would be on Fletcher Drive. Fletcher Drive runs from Matthews to Lakeview. This council was kind enough several years ago to place a three-way stop at Nottingham and Fletcher. That slowed down the traffic from the Indianapolis five hundred to probably Interstate sixteen. This is totally incompatible with the type of neighborhood that we have. I know the mayor's been to our meetings before, our councilman's been to our meetings, and a number of the committees of fire have been to our meetings that we hold once every three months. We do not need an increase in population of one hundred and eighty to two hundred people and upwards of eighty to a hundred motor vehicles entering the only road that we have that runs between Fletcher, between Lakeview and Matthews. This property is also dangerous. This is an active railroad. The pond is not developed, it is a dangerous place to be. The wetlands are dangerous as you approach it. The pond currently floods. This is not an appropriate place for any type of development of this nature. We would welcome something that would be much smaller and would be conducive to our neighborhood. I would sincerely ask you to reject this project, and thank you very much.
Is there anyone else to speak against?
Again, my name is Bob Flaxton. I've visited that neighborhood since I was about this tall, and that is, this development is completely incompatible with the neighborhood. The biggest concern that I would have is the additional traffic. We have zero sidewalks. There are a lot of us that walk those neighborhoods on those roads, and there's nowhere to go but on the road. You can move off the road slightly when there's heavy traffic, but you have a bunch more vehicles coming in and out, and it's just that much more dangerous for us. And so, I just ask you kindly to decline this request.
Is there anyone else to speak against?
My name is Lee Brown Tree, and I've lived in the neighborhood for approximately thirty-eight to forty years, and I live on Nottingham Trail. And my property, well, half the home is covered by property. And I'm afraid of being liable for someone in the back there drowning or getting hurt. And the safety of that pond is, it's not an official pond, it's just tamed up by animals. I would also reiterate the traffic congestion that would, and I would ask you to resist.
Is there anyone else to speak against?
Again, I'm Jason, I live at one hundred Nottingham Trail, I live across the street from Mr. Leo. And just to reiterate, the thing that concerns me most is we have several families in the neighborhood, like Timothy, who have young children who walk around. As you heard me earlier, I don't even ride my bike in the neighborhood, I go over to the green path to ride my bike. Basically, the three-way stop is a beautiful concept. My property has two stops on it. It's basically non-existent, to be quite honest, we can get a lot of the traffic that comes through there, they, it's a pause at best. So, when you look at adding another ninety to a hundred vehicles in the area, I think it is just not, not a good idea in any way, shape, or form. I think that the dangers far exceed, the potential dangers far exceed any assets or any liability here, not a lot of other ones, or any of this stuff that's going to happen.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak against?
Like Jason said, I have two young kids, and we moved this far, it's only been two years ago. And a beautiful, almost beautiful neighborhood, and that is reason why we purchased this home, because it's just a very quiet neighborhood, beautiful neighborhood. And I just want to keep it that way. Because I've heard the chat, just want to keep it quiet and safe, and like, other setting traffic would be another kind. And I walk my kids around there, but I don't go back and bicycle them. I just want to keep it safe.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Hold Miss James. Mayor, right here, yeah, right here. If you, you step on her twice.
Hey, I'm Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm Joanne Nudlin, and I'm here to speak against this proposal. I have lived in that area since the seventies, and my main concern is the traffic, again. Coming out of Lakeview, we have Fletcher Memorial churches there. That area right there has children's soccer games, sports activities, Wednesday church, Sunday church. So, right there, you have a lot of traffic coming out, and that already, you know, makes a difference in our neighborhood. The neighborhoods that developed after, I lived, well, I still live in that area. I'm trying to remember the names, Timber Ridge and Peasant Point, that has a different name, I can't remember. But that has impacted the traffic in this area. And I also drove to Lakeview, and as a senior citizen trying to come out onto Lynn Circle and Fletcher Drive, it is very difficult to get out because with whichever road you use, there's an incline. So, if you're on Fletcher Drive and you want to make a left turn, you have an incline to your right. Cars are not obeying the speed limits, they're coming in there at sixty miles an hour. And then they come up right on your bumper, and you're trying to get your speed up, and they're angry, and there's road rage immediately. The same thing is happening if you're on Lynn Circle by the church, because there you have incline to the left. I don't drive a big S U V, I drive a car. So, I don't have that advantage for seeing these cars coming over the top of these two inclines. And it is very, very, very dangerous area. We have had two vehicle deaths in that area. We had in the front yard on Lakeview, I think some person was ejected and thrown out into the yard and killed. And so, it is a high-impact area, and there just is not the area to, or the access to get out of that area. And as, as I was talking about, we have a lot of elderly that walk. As it was mentioned, when Mr. Flaxton said something about the people that are walking in that area, if a car would come very close, the only place to walk is on the edge of the street. And if you have to move, the ditches are deep, so you're going to have to jump in a deep ditch to get out of the way, and that's a problem. The stop sign that's in place, people run it every day. And you put in all those people in those apartments, and they're going to add to the running of the stop, the stop sign that Mr. Sable spoke about. It has helped, it has slowed it down, but, you know, we have a speeding problem in this city. And, you know, we catch it in that neighborhood too, and they just fly through, we are a residential area. Another thing, there is a problem on Lakeview with the speed limit signs. The speed limit sign in front of the Fletcher Park area, it says forty-five. That's a little bit too fast to have already come past North Lake Road, Duke Road, and there's about four other roads that right now I can't remember. But then, when you get right, and right before you get to Fletcher Drive, it turns to thirty. Well, nobody's obeying that. I mean, it's, they're already, they're already, you know, going faster. I think it's, I think it's slower out of, by the dump, because I drove up and down and marked all this down. So, that's a problem. There needs to be some changes in the speed limit signs, that really needs to be looked at, and it needs to be enforced. And I think the police did a good job with it when they have the signs set up. They did, you know, stop cars speeding for a while, but then it just went back to, you know, the five hundred. So, this is, this is a problem we're having, and we do have a lot of walkers and children in the neighborhood. We also have kids in this is dangerous golf carts that are driving the streets. You put this in, and, you know, you can only supervise that so long, you know, and say, oh, they shouldn't do it, or whatever, but they're out there and they're doing it. And, you know, you get somebody come up around a curb behind a golf cart, and you've got a disaster. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council members.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak against?
I'm not particularly for or against this particular development. What I would like to raise your consciousness level to is if I'm walking on the street and a car comes along, what is somebody in a wheelchair doing? We don't have sidewalks in Statesboro that allow accessibility, and that is not good. We don't have sidewalks in Statesboro that allow accessibility, and that is not good.
Good evening, Mayor, council. My name is Geraldine Trapp, and I live at one oh three Fletcher. My concern is it's only traffic going opposite directions. Then there's a ditch. You get stuck when you cut grass on the lawnmower. So my thing is, I'm retired, fortunately, but for the people that are working, there will be a road rage on Fletcher, because you have to leave early enough to avoid all the additional traffic that will be going back and forth. There's no way you could go around anybody because of the ditch. Again, you have the mud, you get stuck. So my concern is road rage on Fletcher, because there's nowhere to go. People that, like I say, I'm retired, people that are working, my concern is how they're gonna maneuver, getting to work, they're gonna have to leave early or be late.
Thank you. Is there anybody else for against? Yes, ma'am.
How are you doing? I feel like I'm a circle here. I'm Elaine Fletcher Apple. And this particular piece of property was developed, not this particular piece, but Fletcher Drive was developed by my great uncle whenever, what, nineteen fifties is what he said? I've seen Fletcher Drive change, because I live around the corner to the Timber Ridge that thing. So I've seen that traffic increase considerably. To get to my home, I go through the three-way stop sign and then have to directly turn back to the left, and it's becoming an issue. The three-way stop sign has helped, but there is a tremendous amount of agricultural traffic going from over on Matthews Road, from the Grand Bend areas, and from the commercial areas over there, coming down the road and cutting through to get to Lakeview or going the other way. So they have their trailers there. At one time was a Grand Bend over there that was active as far as ten forty back and forth. So it became a cut through, and that was aggravating. And then we finally got, I don't know if there was a traffic study done for the stop sign, there was, got the three-way traffic study, that done. It helps, but as many of them say, hmm, some people just kinda say, oh, well, I'm not gonna stop to get through this time. So there's still a traffic issue. It is not as bad. When we're talking about adding this many units, which is, I believe, very high-density units from what I know, onto a residential street where there's a lot of people that are walking, trying to walk, there's no sidewalk, the density, this is adding as many peoples that live in that area already, pretty much. And it's just, in my opinion, too much. So I'd like to see it not happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Is there anybody else to speak against?
Mayor, my name is Bruce Pigger. I've lived in that neighborhood for two years and wanted, I have two stories. When I lived in a small town that had ten thousand people, they built an apartment complex that had a thousand people in it. So it's about ten percent of the town. I've run on the police force and told me ninety percent of their calls were from that apartment complex. Ten percent was the rest of the town. That's one. The other one is my son lives in an area where across the street they decided to put in single-family homes that were of equal value to the homes that he owns. Halfway through the development, the developer was able to change it, so they started building apartment complexes instead of single-family homes, and has totally destroyed that neighborhood. So I urge you to vote against this. No one that I know from that area would be against single-family homes there, against the high-density apartment complexes.
Thank you. Is there anybody else to speak against? All right, is there anyone to speak for ordinance? Same there, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Is that a second?
All right, all those in favor? Is there any discussion by council?
Is there a motion?
Yeah, well, yeah, me. Just say hello to all the Fletcher folks out there. It's actually pretty astounding. I mean, some of these folks, they meet every quarter. Some of these folks never say anything in those meetings yet they got up here tonight and talked. So that clearly indicates how important this is to them. I had the developer call me before we even got to this point, and I told him, he asked me about rezoning. And I said, look, if you wanna put single-family homes in that neighborhood, it's already zoned for that, the neighborhood is gonna welcome that, you know, especially if it enhances the community. But if you try to put something high-density and increase traffic, and all that traffic is gonna go on Fletcher, right down Fletcher, right through the single-family neighborhood, and putting multifamily behind single-family is just not a good development practice. So, I mean, unless you guys have anything else, I'm gonna make a motion.
I'll shake that one. All those in favor?
Aye.
This is pending, uh, we're moving on to agenda item nine. This is the first meeting of ordinance twenty eight, two and dash twelve. Orders amended article forty-four, solar installation operation, solar system for the city's.
Yes, sir, Mayor, thank you.
Do you all make fun?
Tonight, we'll have our first reading for a new solar ordinance that we plan to adopt. This ordinance is available. Give one second.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing? One second. All those in favor? Frank?
Yes, Mayor. This is a proposal to adopt a new solar ordinance for the city. As you know, solar energy is a growing type of energy source and developed type within the country and specifically in Georgia, South Carolina. So we're trying to feel the funding prepared for this. We have had some interest in solar energy, and we wanna make sure we have an ordinance in place to prepare for that. This ordinance is based off a ordinance that was developed by the University of Georgia. Every university in Georgia has a ordinance sample for the entire state of Georgia. We have amended that ordinance to make it more appropriate for our city. And at this time, I'm gonna ask City Council one just to come forward and do a quick presentation on the immediate work on this project.
Mayor, council, I just specifically wanna go into discussing a little bit about this ordinance. This is something that, as Frank mentioned, it was already kinda put into place. This is where we're going as a community, I think. Renewable energy is going to be relevant as we move forward. If you'll go to the next slide. Let's see the purpose of this ordinance. We wanna regulate and promote the use of alternative energy here in the city of Statesboro, but we also wanna take care to mitigate any adverse impacts to wildlife, agriculture, land, and our natural landscapes here. This ordinance defines and goes into great detail in regards to how total volatile energy systems work, and it goes so far as to define them, so we have a way to regulate them moving forward. If you'll go to the next slide, you'll see, we have a photo actually of one of the types of solar energy systems. We've developed the ordinance to separate them into levels and types. So for our levels, we have our principal solar energy systems, and those are, it'll be, you have a parcel, you have an energy system there. That is the primary use of that parcel. And for our accessory uses, you have a house, you have a small little garden of things beside you. Frank's already moved to our next slide. These are our types. We have building-integrated systems, which you'll see on this photo. This particular type of structure is actually built into a home, so it's one of those things that, you know, it's gonna be a part of the building plan from the start. It's not something you just slap on the roof, although that is a type. Rooftops aren't integral to your structure, but they are there. Ground-mounted, which was the first photo that you saw, those are installed in certain scales based on their acreage. So we have your small solar gardens, which, you know, they're three acres. You go up into your intermediate scale, which will be three acres to fifteen acres, and then you have your large solar farms, which are gonna be over fifteen acres. Though likely they're having some of that in Statesboro, which is relatively low, but we do wanna make sure that we're able to contend with it. The permitting procedures, they're gonna be very similar to what we have now for building permits. There are a few things that are put in place to ensure that those items are inspected properly, so that we can ensure the safety of, you know, everyone who will be near that system, try to keep people away from that system in certain circumstances, and protect property owners as well. Currently, we are discussing the possible fee structures that are going to place with this. We have not got that just yet. We will try to have that moving forward if this ordinance does pass. Are there any questions in regards to the solar ordinance right now that I might give an answer or any concerns?
Any questions by council? Is there any reason? Is there anyone here to speak for? Is there anyone here to speak against? Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Is that a second? All those in favor? We're moving on to agenda item ten. This is the public hearing, first meeting of ordinance twenty eight, two and dash oh nine. Orders amended article two, section two of the city of Statesboro co-ordinates to establish the State's Board Commission on Diversity and Inclusion pursuant to City Charter two dash six. For the city of Statesboro, I wanna get background on where we are right now. The next three items we're gonna be discussing, diversity and inclusion, workforce development and youth development. On my campaign to become mayor of the city of Statesboro, that was something I was very clear about. These are three initiatives that I'm very dedicated to, and they are also best practices. And if you see any Fortune 500 company, they incorporate all three of these measures. When it comes to youth, you see a Fortune 500 companies looking at technical schools, universities, they're looking for young, vibrant talent, because they know that's where the new ideas are coming from. And any organization or institution that's concerned about its future are, are willing to invest into its young people. I believe that is the same thing when it comes to our city. I believe that in the case of the city of Statesboro, the city government is the only institution at this time that can do the things that need to be done for our young people in our community. A couple of weeks back, we had a young man in our community shot and killed. He wasn't shot and killed by someone that was older than him, he was shot and killed by somebody who was younger than him. And at this point, as mayor of this city, I can no longer sit aside and wait for something to happen. I feel that we must provide leadership for our young people to do something to change. Too many of our young people are dealing with poverty in this community. Fifty-plus percent of the children that go to bed at night in our, in our community, they're going to bed as victims of poverty. And I'm not talking about the adult poverty rate, I'm talking about simply children, simply children. And I believe that this is a moral issue that we have, we must, as leaders in this community, have the more authority to address. Workforce development, that's the third, that's the third commission that we're gonna be discussing this evening. We're gonna get our people to work. Today, I had the opportunity to sit in for a few minutes with the, with our state representatives and state senators out of Georgia Southern, and guess what they were talking about was a key measure for this area, workforce development. And so I believe it's time for the city of Statesboro to put some skin in the game. When it comes to our young people, we petitioned for our judges to hire a juvenile court judge, and we're hoping that they do so. But we can't ask them to spend a hundred thousand dollars, and we won't put together a commission where the young people, where we can be able to go out and gather resources for our young people. We partner with Georgia Southern, PG Tech, and many other higher education and public aid institutions all of the time. It's time for the city of Statesboro to put some skin in the game. And when it comes to diversity and inclusion, the city council passed unanimously a resolution that we're gonna be an inclusive city, where it's time to put skin in the game. It's time for us to make sure that the rubber meets the road. So at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to individuals that's done all of this hard work, and then it's up to the council at this point. It's up to the council to decide whether or not, whether or not the city is gonna put some skin in the game, and we're gonna do something to move our community forward. So first on the agenda is that we're going to open up, lead a motion to open up the public hearing. Is there a motion to do so? Is there a second? All those in favor? All right, the first, the first area that we're looking at is diversity and inclusion. Dr. Schultze.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. How are y'all doing? Thank you for giving me the opportunity. I've spoken with most of you about this initiative already, but thank you for giving me the opportunity to come and share with you the important work that the Committee on Diversity and Inclusion has been working on for some time, also known as One Borough. It's been a privilege, honestly, to work with the fabulous people I've worked with, people that are deeply committed and dedicated to our great city. And if, just really quickly, if I could get the folks who've been on the committee to stand up and be recognized, that would be wonderful. I know not everyone could make it this evening. I know a couple of people were, one person was teaching and another person had another engagement. Tonight, by voting yes, you have the opportunity to build on this resolution twenty seventeen four that y'all voted on in March of twenty seventeen. Y'all said that Statesboro is an inclusive, welcoming, and safe city for all people, and y'all were ahead of the curve on that. And so that was about a year before Mayor McCullar put together the diversity, the Committee on Diversity and Inclusion. So again, we obviously want you to vote yes for that. I heard the mayor say something about morals. We think that putting together this commission is a moral issue, but it's also a practical issue. We know that, you know, having dedication to diversity stimulates economic growth and innovation, and really, communities that don't put, don't take advantage of their diversity, they are leaving money on the table. That's, that's plain and simple. They're leaving money on the table. And we gotta use the resources that we have now, ones that we maybe don't even know about, until we can bring different communities together. So really quickly, since March, One Borough has done a preliminary strategic plan, which is a living document, this is not a complete document. And I passed out, I believe my colleague Suzanne passed out a handout earlier. I hope all of you received that. Did y'all receive that? Wonderful, okay. And you'll notice we have our mission, our approach, our recommendations, and here's the thing, we do not have to reinvent the wheel. All we have to do is follow best practices from other cities around the country who have been successful. So for our strategic plan, we looked at cities like Hamilton, Ohio, and Warrensburg, Missouri, and Columbus, Georgia. And Columbus, Georgia is considered one of the best-run cities in America. And so we're looking at places who've done it right. And tonight, I wanna focus on recommendation number five. We've made five recommendations, but we really believe, One Borough believes, that number five is a priority, because it's something that we can do with what we already have. We have a lot of resources and talent already here. So number five is to improve communication and challenge biases and stereotypes that exist, be they recognized or unrecognized by the citizens of Statesboro. So how can we start to work on this recommendation? So what we've come up with is that we'd like to put together an event called the Statesboro Longest Table. And this would be held in downtown Statesboro, would be several city blocks, and really, we're using the dinner table as a vehicle to bring diverse people together to have conversations over differences. And breaking bread with someone is a wonderful way to break down barriers and create connections and sit with people that you wouldn't normally talk with. The great news is, again, other cities have done this from across the country, and there are free kits that we can use. People have already created these great tools. You can sit and have dinner and have, you know, answer questions like, what brought you to this great town? What do we need to change? What's great about Statesboro? And so really, it's connecting people that wouldn't normally come together. Again, it's using the resources we already have, okay? So finally, we also talked about, we are Statesboro Multimedia Contest. I have to give credit to Stacy Smallwood, this was his idea. So leading up to the longest table, Statesboro Longest Table, what we wanna do is we wanna highlight what people are already doing well to celebrate diversity in our community. There's too many sects of us that... And so we're going to send a call to faith communities, to individuals, businesses, organizations, to put together, um, video clips of what you're already doing well to promote diversity. And we're going to show the winning videos at the Statesboro Longest Table. Ideally, our vision is for possibly April of 2019. And so, as I mentioned, we are One Borough, and that's really where we'd like to start. We have other recommendations and we have a lot of work to do, but we really want to highlight the strengths that the city already has. And council members, I urge you to vote yes because you have the chance to be leaders in our state. We could be the first city to do the longest table in Georgia. We can be the leaders, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone to speak for? All right, is it?
Good evening, Mayor McCullar. Good evening, the city council. My name is Keishon Housley, and I am a student here at Georgia Southern University. I'm also president of a student organization called Know Your Word. Know Your Word, we are a social activist, environmental, and empowerment organization. And over the past couple of months, I had members, and this is, I'm speaking also to the, I refer to the inclusion, inclusion committee when I say this, but I've had members of my organization asked to be a part of what you do. Do not forget about us. Do not forget about the students who walk with Georgia Southern's campus every day. Don't forget about us. We are a part of the city too, and that's what I want to bring up to the city council. We are a part of the city too. A lot of towns, you, you all, you all work on legislation that affect us. And for a long, long time, we have been kind of put out of the process. Thankfully, times are changing. Times are changing within this city, and it is my promise to you that we will be a part of this new Statesboro. Uh, some of my colleagues, some of my members here in the audience tonight, because we're here to support you. In regards to the committee, I want you all to support it. Yes, I want you to say yes, I want you to support this committee. If not, I fear that it would set Statesboro back. And to be fair, we're not good. Just being honest. They won't look at me, they won't look at me. Think about where Statesboro would be a decade from now. What is the legacy you want to leave behind? I hope it's a positive one. I hope it's a change that goes with the times. Statesboro is changing, the world is changing faster than we can even comprehend it. Thank you for your time. I hope you all support it. Yes, and not just to this committee, but to the works committee, but to the youth committee as well. We're ready, we're ready for the fight, we're ready for the good fight. Give us the good fight, we're going to get there, okay? We, let us get there. Give us, let us get there.
So my name is Scott Morgan Pease, I live at 1311 Kermit Drive. I'm brand new to Statesboro, and I just kind of wanted to give you my perspective as, here for these glasses, I'm just seeing. So anyways, I just want to give you my perspective as a newcomer. Mayor, council, I appreciate the time to be able to talk, talk to you. Um, when I first moved here, I was really excited about my position. I work at Georgia Southern, I would say I'm not speaking on behalf of the university. But when I came to interview, I was a little bit nervous about this community, given the fact that you do have a past. The past is pretty clear and obvious. I saw the large fella monument that you have outside your courtyard. Um, that was quite one of the big indicators that made me a little bit hesitant about coming here. Uh, but again, I, when I did come to Georgia Southern University, I was, as you know, a bit of a, of a, the actual institution. Um, but I want to go on and say that when I did finally move here, my introduction to Statesboro was pickup trucks with large Confederate flags flying out the backside. And I did have a couple of moments where I stood back and thought, what did I get myself into? Um, and it's changed a lot, just based off of the individuals I've met. It's changed based off of the community itself, and I really grown to love Statesboro. Um, but I'm here in support of the council, and I'm in support of this commission on the basis of inclusion and diversity because it's extremely needed. And I'm coming from Chicago, I'm coming from, um, Park Slope, Brooklyn, I'm coming from Montana. And there's areas within those populated cities and boroughs that actually have done it right and have thrived as a direct result. So I think you're going to see a great impact here within this particular town. This town itself clearly is struggling economically. You go into, looking to the stores, the restaurants, it's becoming a ghost town. I have friends that are store, store owners, and I can only tell you that the idea of inclusion and diversity is going to bring in traffic. It's going to bring in tourists. Most importantly, it's going to, I think, be a tremendous benefit for Statesboro. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak for? We got two, I'm going to start with, yeah, McCullar.
I'll be real brief on this, since I've been here for a very short period. But, um, I'm Lani Jenkins, and I would like to say this simply, that I have, um, worked in Statesboro for eight years, and I finally convinced my husband to move here from a neighboring county. Um, and the reason I moved here was because I wanted more diversity. Um, and I appreciate being here, and I hope that we continue growing that diverse nature of the Statesboro community by approving this commission.
Thank you.
My name is Marcus Tool, and I want to comment on a couple of things. First of all, one of my great passions is making sure that, um, and being an advocate for those who are low income, uh, those who are people of color or who, for some other reason, are disenfranchised. I'm very, very active on the Blue Mile Committee, as some of you know. And, um, one of my roles on the Blue Mile Committee is to represent Habitat for Humanity. But even in that capacity, one of my roles in that committee is to make sure that the neighborhoods that are part of Blue Mile are included and have a voice and have a seat at the table. Uh, one of the things that I work to do is to make sure that on the, uh, Blue Mile, uh, uh, foundation, which decides how to spend the money that was won, was a person who lives in Blue Mile and who was one of our Habitat House owners. So that's an area of passion, and so this really, this is something I really, uh, I really support wholeheartedly from that standpoint. I support it for another reason, it's a personal reason. Um, some people know this, some people don't know this. Um, I am a gay man. Most, I, I was, at one point, a-
You are a human?
Yes.
Exactly.
Okay. At one point, I was a pastor in the Presbyterian Church in America, I was closeted. Uh, I have seen both sides of that debate. I've been on both sides of that debate myself, personally. My biggest concern in all of this is that people shout at each other and are not listening. And there are violent points on both sides. And something like this will get people talking at a normal voice and actually hearing each other and hearing the issues and here, hearing people's hearts and hearing that all of us, regardless of where we stand on these kinds of issues, are people who are trying to do the best that we can with the deck of cards that they give us. And so if we want to avoid violence in this community, if we want to avoid situations that will embarrass us as a community, this is a good start. A start, it's not the end point. It is a start, the beginning of conversation, and I really want to encourage y'all to begin this conversation. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. Um, I'm Suzanne Jordan. I'm on the committee, and I just wanted to take a minute to explain to y'all why this is a passion of mine. I'm from here, my roots are here. My granddaddy was a sharecropper in Brooklyn and managed to, to get his own little farm before he passed. I've been here my entire life, this has been my home. Also went to Georgia Southern, and I cannot tell you how many of my friends, as soon as I graduated, okay, where are you going? I told them, nowhere, Statesboro's my home. People look at me like I'm crazy. Why would you want to stay here? Why would you want to stay in a town like this that treats you, especially with my different identities, marginalized thought processes, uh, why would you want to stay here? And I tell them, I love this town, and I don't give up on what I love. So when Mayor McCullar suggested this committee to me, I automatically jumped on it because I see potential in Statesboro. I see how we can be better than what people see us as. I see how we can be the town that doesn't scare brand-new associate deans or brand-new students away. I see how we can be the town where people fall in love, they feel like it's a family, they feel like they're accepted no matter who they are, respected no matter who they are, and that they can actually thrive and flourish here. And that is why I'm on this committee, and that's why I beg you, you're representatives of your communities. Your communities are diverse. Communities need inclusion. Please represent your communities. Please vote yes, because they need you.
All right. Is there anybody else to speak for? Can I just, uh, call up a lady?
Good evening, council. Um, I hope you guys are doing all right today. Um, my name is Zakiya Daniel. I'm a student at Georgia Southern University. Um, forgive my scratching throat. Um, I am here also to speak for this, um, commission because I feel that diversity is extremely important, especially for the Statesboro community. When I came here to Georgia Southern, I didn't just pick the school because it was diverse, I picked it because the community felt diverse and it felt like home. I'm from Augusta, and I'm trying to get more involved in that community as well. But because Statesboro is basically my second home, I feel that it is very important for all of us to be included. And I think by reaching out for like students and people of all ages, of all races, and from all different parts of Statesboro, I think that's extremely important. And it will help encourage people to become more involved, especially the students who are living here. And so, um, in this thing, I'm just wanting to say that I think that everyone should be in support of this because it will help our community become stronger, because people won't feel excluded. And I think that that is why everyone should support this.
Is there anybody else to speak for? Yes, ma'am?
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Putton, I'm a student at UGA. I'm actually here for Dr. Fagan's Social American Girl Empowerment Class. Um, did not plan to come up here and talk, but the idea that Dr. Schuels is talking about and the idea of this commission, um, I think is excellent, especially at the longest table. A lot of people have that kind of reality, but anyway. Um, social media permeates every American household. You look on the news and even local news stations, you see what they show you, your community, what your state is like, what your country is like. And this is an opportunity to challenge those ideas. Excuse me, I'm not very good at this either.
Great.
Um, it's an opportunity to challenge those ideas and give people of Statesboro an opportunity to englet, to, um, conango, people they might not ordinarily talk with. And, um, it would set an example for other cities and other counties even, um, to start that wave of change. Because those changes don't happen on Facebook or Twitter or what have you. They start here at home. And I want to give you guys an idea of what you're about to do. Thank you.
Is there another one?
Hello. Good evening, my name is Dr. Maxine Ryan. I am the interim chair of the purpose of Georgia Southern University. I had no intention of speaking, but as I was listening to everyone, um, it dawned on me that in my role, I have the opportunity to meet with people, particularly faculty and staff at Georgia Southern, who still have, um, they're living what they learn. They still have an idea of the old Statesboro. This particular commission will have the opportunity to be a change agent, an educational agent, um, to steer things in a more positive way, to encourage people to talk to one another. There was a time in the United States where we wanted to become a melting pot. And we realized that being a melting pot meant melting into what? What do we look like? What do we sound like? What do we taste like? And we realized that being a melting pot was not the ideal. But rather, we would be more like a stew or better yet, a salad bowl. Well, you could be a cucumber, and you could be a lettuce, and you could be, uh, a crouton, and I could be a rabbit or whatever. And we maintain our taste, our texture, and the way we look and feel in taste. And we join together, and our citizenship is the salad dressing. Statesboro is a grand salad bowl, bowl, where people from different backgrounds, ethnicities, gender orientation, um, all of that can join together. It takes a commission like this for people who are different, who decide to work on one accord, to make a difference. You all have the opportunity tonight to vote on something that will make a difference. And I encourage you, I implore, that you do that so that you can change the trajectory, and continue to change the trajectory, uh, the young girl mentioned about, um, how people perceive Statesboro, how Statesboro perceives in the media. And you have an opportunity to change that by voting yes to the commission. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is Julie Higgins. Um, I have a vested interest in this, I am part of the commission. But I am also talking to you because I am also the head of the Combinational Disability Services at Savannah College of Art and Design. I am a proud resident of Statesboro, and to put it honestly, coming home to Statesboro is one of the happiest parts of my day every day. One, because I am the mother of a multiracial two-year-old who is an amazing human being. Which is also because it's a wonderful community, that's embraced many of the people that I know, myself, my husband, many of the people that I encounter. Living in, or living in Statesboro and working in Savannah, I'm asked every day, why do you live in Statesboro? When are you moving to Savannah? I'm not moving to Savannah. I'm not moving to Fuller. I'm not moving to Richmond Hill. I'm going to stay in Statesboro. I'm going to stay in Statesboro because it's an amazing community that has amazing potential. There are great things that go on in Statesboro, and I just encourage you to continue to, um, have those great things continue. Keep voting yes.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Michael Woody, I'm a student here at Georgia Southern. Uh, I'm going to be honest with y'all, when I was first looking at schools and I thought about living in Statesboro, I was pretty apprehensive. I thought this was like trigger-ish. Not great things for the city or for the school. And I came down here worried about what was going to happen, and I fell in love with this city. I saw it was diverse, I saw all the people were friendly. I have, I've made so many friends, I've made family here. And I want to see that family grow. I want to see that family prosper. And the best way to do that is to encourage diversity and inclusion. It's, we've got to open up the doors in our city and welcome any people that want to. And we got to give them the doors.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak for?
My name is Alex Puddin, I'm currently an UGA student. Um, I'm planning to graduate after this, so eventually I may move on for better work and educational opportunities. However, while I'm here, I would like to reiterate one that several people have made, but I'm going to put it to a different light. but I'm going to put it to a different light. Uh, let's pick a crop that is rather prominent to our state, cotton. Have you ever seen a cotton field? It's nothing but, obviously, cotton plants are as a wood we're discussing. But what does it take to grow this field? You have to have artificial measures, sorry. Water to keep it going. You have to add fertilizer, things to keep the nutrient soil, nutrient in the soil or enrich it to keep it growing. Farming was kind of a mention by the humans a long time ago. And then the order, of course, through states, has a period of celebration for that. Now, let's take a look at the natural environment. What do you have? You have diverse low shrub type plants. You have a tall tree. Things with the roots that go deep, go wide, shallow, but they help enrich the soil. You also have fungi. You have insects, things that break down decayed matter to return that nutrients. You also have various animals that are on the prey upon plants or itself. For example, this diversity is what truly allows this ecosystem to thrive on its own because if it was just one plant or one crop, it requires an artificial system to keep it growing. Human civilizations aren't much the same. If you're trying to maintain one color or one gender or one specific type, there are many artificial measures that must come into play to keep it in that selected area. But we have many people like this, men, women, short, tall, any skin color you wish to choose. And when they all come together and work together, that is when the state grows its crops. And this may be one small city, that's where it starts. One small town, one small city, then it moves to the state, then the national level. National level. And then, say we have a continent, we have our entirety of our land. Our species permeates the world. Start small or big. It may start here, it may not start here. Eventually, we can all come together as a species as we are and work together to make our communities and our planet better for the world.
Okay. Thank you.
I realize that I didn't tell you who I am before. I'm Janice Cawthorn. I'm the oldest person around here now. I'm the oldest person on the commission, on the commission. But this is something that I have worked for most of my life, since I was nine years old, and that's over seventy years. So I'm very pleased to have been allowed to serve on this, on the beginnings of this commission. I'm not associated with Georgia Southern except tangentially. I'm just a person who lives in a house and does my flowers and goes to church every once in a while and, you know, that sort of thing. But I really hope that you will commit to supporting the creation of this commission because it's very important. We need this to move our city forward. I appreciate your listening to my ramblings and I will look forward to working with all of you.
Is there anyone else to speak for the commission? All right, is there anyone who speaks against the commission? Is there anyone who speaks for or against? All right, I'd like to open it up for a count. Do I like to close public here? Is that a motion for a public here? Just a second. All right, is there any council discussion? No council discussion? Okay. Um, council, I know that this is a, this is a public hearing in the first reading, but I would like to ask you to vote on this tonight. I think that we've had enough of time and I think that you've had the opportunity to review documents, some shared reviews. Uh, the bulk of this, uh, council has had the opportunity to meet with each one of the, um, uh, committee members. Uh, and they've all shared information and been extremely open. So at this time, I would like, um, the council to join me and these citizens in moving our city forward and making our city a more inclusive community by voting to approve this commission. So we don't have to waste time and we can get to work on our community. Do I have a council member that will make that motion? Okay?
Mayor, it's, I mean, honestly, I, I appreciate the spirit of what this commission is designed to do. However, you have an ordinance here in front of us that is incomplete. It has no mission.
You need to direct that to our city attorney because I worked through.
The city attorney works to the council's direction.
No, 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 no. You misunderstand what I'm saying. I've worked through this with the city attorney. So if there's any variance or anything that's wrong, address that to the city attorney.
I, I'm, I understand. I don't need to address Kane. There's a TBD in here. It is incomplete. I'm not about to vote for something that's incomplete.
Wrong.
I understand that that's not on the agenda. I understand. I understand that you guys are very, are interested and very dedicated to this. I appreciate you all's work, I, I do. But there, there also is, and this is something that's going to unfortunately come up because it, it, uh, it has gotten to this point despite my efforts to not get it to this point. And that is there is a process for creating these commissions and setting up these.
What is that process, council? What's the process?
I'm, well, I read the chart. It's in the chart. You have people that have the chart right now, we'd be lying.
Okay.
Uh, but it's, it's, uh, these commissions, well, here's the thing. There's a skill of authority here that we have not seen. We have not had any input and I finally understand.
No, councilman, you have not had.
I have.
Everybody up here has met with these, has met with these committees except for you. You've been invited, I even asked you.
I invited one.
I, I, I even asked you, I said, "Councilman, if you would like to be a part of this", I said, "If you feel that a councilman needs to be a part of this", I asked, "Would you do it?" And your answer to me was what?
Yes.
No.
No, I said, "I cannot do all three."
No, you did not say yes. And you know that, that is not true. You know it's not true. Kane, will you please, um, advise the council as to how do we choose this route with these particular councils?
I'm, I'm, I was, I was just handed a scope of authority and it, Captain Boyd, this is correct. In the, in the presented resolution under, under section 257, um, it is, is in red. It is to be determined. I was just handed a scope of authority here and it was to fill in what I was given this. And so the scope of authority here, those, those that do is that that shall have the authority to prepare studies and reports for the purpose of supporting the government body or policy matters relating to, and that's what the DVD starts, promoting diversity, inclusion, and equity among citizens of State's Borough connected to the issues, to the issues of poverty and prosperity. So that's what we get with, to the, um, to, into it as, so that, you know, that could be added in, but that's where we are.
Okay. And, and the point I'm trying to get you to make is that when we established the Alcohol Advisory Board, um, was that, was that done through an ordinance or did a council person serve in, in to run on that?
No, it's, it's the exact same mechanism presented here.
Okay, the exact same, I want to repeat that. The exact same mechanism that's being presented here.
Which, which means is presented and then discussed amongst the council. And that took, how long did it take to get that, uh, Alcohol Control Board modification through, six months?
And we didn't, I didn't invite you since you're a temporary to be a part of this, so that was eight months?
We don't need, we have a TBD here, mayor. It says this right at the end.
So, so, so at the end of the day, do I have a council member that will support what we? How many people, by stand, stand up if you're here, if you're here to support these commissions? If you want, if you want to see this pass tonight, if you want to see our city move forward and put all of the politics aside, please remain standing. Thank you. Thank you. This can be done with a simple up and down vote.
Mayor, we don't have a complete ordinance, I'm sorry.
Okay, then, then you don't vote for it. The unvote. Do we have anybody here who wants to approve this? Look at you, look at.
On a happier note, I won't tell you how much forward I look for a extremely long table all the way through downtown, held together by salad dressing. However, um, I would like to have a second reading. And, 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 and there's nothing against anybody or for anybody. It's just that's the way we do that. Uh, we have a first and second reading.
Okay.
Um, but I'm serious. Salad dressing.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it, sir. All right. Go right ahead.
Hey, we had an understanding of what's being debated between the two of them. I don't know that I understand.
In the presented resolution, councilman, it's, it's, it's in the section, in this case, in section 257, the scope of authority, it says that, that the way these commissions work is they are allowed to present studies and recommendations to the government body, human error council, um, on policy matters relating to, and in this case, and this would be included in the language that would be presented for second reading if, uh, councilmen were suggesting it, say on their matters related to promoting diversity, inclusion, and equity among citizens of State's Borough connected to issues of poverty and prosperity. The same way that the, um, you know, the established for the resolution for the Alcohol Advisory Board is like for matters relating to alcohol, you know, alcohol, self, self, self service within the state.
Okay, Kane, let me ask you this question. What you're saying right now, can we not add that to it right now?
Oh, good, yeah.
Absolutely. And that's what I'm saying.
Guys, you know.
You want us to move on and vote on this?
No, no, I'm talking and you're interrupting me.
You're talking and you're, I'm talking and you're interrupting me.
You want us to vote on an ordinance we've never seen before tonight? And you got upset when we didn't, when we even talked about it during the alcohol stuff.
Well, you, and yet, everybody that's up here has had the opportunity to meet with these individuals.
No one has had an opportunity to read.
This is not this difficult. State's Borough, you see what I'm dealing with.
No, but just, just, councilman, boy. Sorry. Gentlemen, in fairness to the people that sit before us, that want respect, I, I would ask that, with the view that I understand your passion and appreciation and try to listen to each other because I think that's what they're asking for. I think we have to be, we're, I appreciate your frustration, both of you. But I think the only way to move forward is to set the example and I would just ask that both of you hear each other out, whether you agree or disagree. Because I'm trying to gain an understanding of both of your perspectives right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you too. I mean, I'm, no, no, I just, I mean, I really, I'm, I'm trying to understand your argument, to be honest with you.
Okay. So, so we are.
Somewhere we, there is no argument. It was not decided.
We have a process, ma'am, of, of when a new ordinance is presented, it gets presented in completion and for full reading. And then two weeks later, that, that full, uh, ordinance gets presented again for a second. And this one isn't even, we just have incomplete documents. So do you want us to be just voting on incomplete ordinance?
Yes, I understand.
It's January.
Yeah, it's right here.
I have never seen that before tonight.
Because he's chosen.
Yeah, this little boy has been invited to be a part of this process since January the 18th. He has chosen not to be a part of this process. And in a political, in a political means, he's fighting everything that this mayor has done for nine months, for nine months. It's a no-brainer, absolutely. This is a no-brainer.
That's required.
That could be your argument.
It's, it's interesting because the process, when he was trying to amend the alcohol ordinances, he tried to get a, uh, get a, get a vote on it right then. The very same thing that I'm doing right now. You waited for two weeks? Come on, Phil.
Because there's a difference between alcohol.
It has a difference between alcohol and diversity and inclusion. We're talking about human beings. We're talking about stepping up and allowing human beings to feel welcome and inclusive into our city. It's as simple as that. This is politics for you, Phil.
Thirty-seven page report. And I provided that to each member.
Exactly.
I'm never, I'm never, I'm never giving a word.
On the 12th of September, I emailed that.
I'm not giving a word.
Yes, absolutely. This is what I'm dealing with.
I'm about to report this up.
Phil was intentionally.
Yeah, this is intentional.
Look, I'd like to see, I'd like to see.
You don't want to sit, Phil, you've been fighting this with. Phil, you were, Phil, you were trying to get it taken off of the city website. That's how petty you were.
Two of y'all are all ruining the happy news I had from all.
But I'm sorry, but this is something serious. This is something very serious. It's serious.
Not serious about it.
So I'll tell you what, um, since we don't have a motion, uh, to go ahead and vote on this tonight, um, my assumption is that we'll move to the second reading. Uh, and this will bring this up on the second meeting, second agenda on, uh, in October. The second meeting, the second meeting in October, yes.
Can we be first on the agenda then?
Yeah.
And not one council member had.
Well, the reason why it's tough, moving on to the second meeting is because many of these people work and they're not going to remain denied any of this.
Okay, all right. And, and to save the interest of time, is this the direction that the council would like to go for? Agenda items 11 and 12.
Right.
Okay. All right, absolutely. So what we'll do for Agenda item 11 and 12, we will, um, we'll open it up for public hearing. We'll have a presentation on it. We have a lot of questions. We'll continue the same process, but it'll be with the understanding that they will come back up for the second meeting in October. So Agenda item 11.
If we will be diverse.
Uh, for Agenda item 11, a public hearing in the first reading of ordinance 2018-10, a ordinance amending Article 2, Section 2 of the City of State's Borough code ordinance is to establish the State's Borough Youth Commission pursuant to the city charter. Um, again, this is a commission that's going to be addressing the youth, young people in our community. And we are losing too many of our children to gangs in this community. Again, this is another agenda item that is a no-brainer to me. There is no need to bring this back up for a second, a second reading in, in October. You wouldn't need a second reading to feed your kid. But you got to bring this up for a second reading. So since this is going to be the way that we're going to go, this is the way we're going to go. So Laney, come on up. Tell us about the great work and great vision that you guys have done.
Well, Mr. Mayor and Councilman, my name is Laney Jenkins and I am so excited about the work that this commission has done. This committee on youth, um, I wanted to tell you a little bit about the people that have been involved in the movement. We, and I won't name names, just tell you that we have somebody who was with the Office of the VP for Enrollment Management at Georgia Southern. We have a nursing student who's also the founder of Strong and Focused, a nonprofit. We have the Director of Government and Foundation Support at the Boys and Girls Club. We have a senior academic dean at Oegi Tech, a director of iFocus Mentoring Program, Associate Professor of College of Education in the Department of Curriculum, of Foundations and Reading. Uh, myself, I'm a former director of Child Advocacy Services, Southeast Georgia. Renata Newmiljello, who is a, uh, my co-chair, and, um, she's the Chief Public Defender for Oegi Judicial Service. And we have someone who's the Director of Student Life at East Georgia State and she also is the founder of Our Girls Rock Too. And we have a Community Advocate for Human Trafficking. So I just wanted to kind of tell you who was on our committee so that you'd have an idea of the kind of thought and process that went into this. Our mission, we, we took what the, what the mayor asked us to look at, um, and we decided that the mission to serve his vision would be to, to secure a future for State's Borough's youth through civic engagement, education, and empowerment. And we knew that we needed to start with a minimum of pre-K through 18 because if we wait to high school to start addressing the kids' needs, we sure waited too long. And actually, I always said, if you were, if you got to 11 years old and nobody told you what to do or wipe your mouth or whatever, it was way too late then. So how do we accomplish this, up this mission? We decided, and I was, I was thrilled to hear the mayor earlier talk about having SKIN in the game because we have a little acronym to name our group and that is SKIN, State's Borough Community Youth Network. We see that the, what we need in State's Borough, and this group was stuck from various walks of working with children. We know that we need a hub. We need something where we have a base, where all these things that are already existing can be leveraged to the, to the betterment of our youth. We wanted to bring together youth, parents, and community programs. Have a network hub that would be partially online, as you know, everything else is online, right? But it's going to be a place where all of you will know, if you have a child or a grandchild who needs, um, recreational ball, somebody's going to be able to tell you how to do that. But if you need a child who needs therapy, physical, speech, occupational, mental health, whatever, you're going to be able to find out where to get that too. If you're just looking for a summer camp, you're going to be able to come to our SKIN network and find out where, where to do that. We really believe that the way to do this, the only way to do this is that we have to have an organized group of community leaders and activists. Um, we know that we, in addition to the website, we have a social media platform, but we know that we also have to get people together face-to-face. So we're talking about an annual convening, convening of the members of this group. So what are we going to do? Leverage and support existing youth programs, meet the community needs and gaps. Leverage and support existing youth programs, meet the community needs and gaps with new youth programs, seek additional funding to expand capacity of existing programs, and by this, I'm not saying we're going to start bleeding the city, I'm talking about grants and, and ways to get funding for these programs. And so we want to do it for existing programs, but we want to get, seek additional funding for, so we can have new programs as well. It will connect youth, parents, schools to community programs and improve youth outcomes to reduce the cycles of poverty and violence. How are we going to do this? So we said, well, how are we going to leverage existing programs? We're going to identify the members and ongoing leadership, and we've already identified, just frame story, the members, people who already have these things going on, right? People who are already interested and people who already have organizations. We want to identify the current programs and resources by including other people, because there were eight of us, well, there's a lot more people who know what else is going on that need to be included. Collect vital information on current programs, such as the population served, the function, the purpose of the program, the leadership, we'll have a database and website. But we really want to know, how did we, we really said, how are we going to meet the community's needs? Okay, we know how we're going to put this together, how is that going to help the community? We want to identify and address barriers that prevent youth from participating in current programs, i.e. the big transportation, right? We know that we're going to have to do something about transportation. Conduct a needs analysis to identify gaps in the current programs, explore current city and county funding of community youth program, it's about not duplicating what we already have going good, it's about growing what we have to make it even better. And identify sources of grants and funding for youth programs. I'm tickled to say that we've already identified some grants that could help some of the, some of the organizations that are already in existence. We want to develop a leadership program, and this is a biggie, for youth beginning with pre-K to provide age-appropriate leadership education. We're talking about safety, school violence, human trafficking, bullying prevention, a community-based early childcare and parenting program. By putting this leadership program together, we see it being, I'm sure you're all familiar with the character award of the week, or the month, or however the schools do it. Okay, so this would be something that we start incorporating into the schools, starting from young, easy, once a week, once every day, it's the word of the day, or whatever. As they get to second grade, for instance, they would have, it's not going to be a prize, it's not going to be a monetary reward, it's not going to be everybody gets a pin, it would be like, you get here, and then you get to do this, it would be a responsibility that they would grow into. From third grade to fifth grade, another responsibility that they would be looking forward to. And you know, we all, all of us who have had big sisters or brothers, we know, well, when do I get to do that, right?
That's right.
That's what we're talking about. Like, we want them to be saying, when do I get to do the next cool thing? The things that we're going to address in the youth academy, and that would be for ages fourteen to seventeen, we would be providing them with leadership education, that would include public speaking, community activism, community organizing, advocate, I'm a big fan of that, project and group leadership and service learning. As these kids move up through high school, the seventeen-year-olds are going to be, the eighteen-year-olds will be the leaders for the sixteen and fifteens, and the sixteen and fifteens are the leaders for the fourteens and the thirteens, et cetera. So they're always progressing into this next great place. One of the things that we envisioned is starting with a stakeholders meeting, having a big kickoff event, getting all the youth programs involved, model other community programs, Jenkins County has a really good program, Savannah's got a couple of good programs, develop plans to community needs with additional nonprofits, and if, and depending on how we would organize, if that's, we need a Bible with three, C three, with a fiscal agent as a city or something to bring money in and get, you know, the grant money in and grant money out, that's how we would, how we would do it. But of course, that's open. We've got a list of current youth organizations and activities, but like I said, it's really, I'm sure it's less than what is really all out there already. So we asked the commission to really consider, how are we going to move these kids, how are we going to keep them off the street, how are we going to keep them involved in sports and activities and non-sports activities as well? There's an awful lot of people who don't want to be out in ninety degrees in September. So we ask you, as a committee, to please strongly consider this, and when you do get ready to vote, please vote yes.
Thank you. Anybody here speak for the youth commission? Anybody here speak against?
Good evening, my name is Ava Purcell, and I am on the youth commission, mayor and council. Thank you all for your time. When you all do have an opportunity to review the commission, I know it's a proverb that we probably all said here in this room once or twice, probably several times through life, is that it takes a village to raise a child, and I think that encompasses what our youth commission is all about. It takes interacting with various organizations, different people in the community to kind of raise our children, to help them be the next in whatever they want to be. Oftentimes, we always say, I want you, son, to be the next president, or I want you, daughter, to be the next president. And so I think what this commission has is the opportunity to make our children next here in Statesboro. And we're also, as lady mentioned, we want to be the hub. Oftentimes, surrounding counties, they don't have the resources, they don't have the ability to put in programs or initiatives for our youth, and so Statesboro will very much be that hub for our youth. I'm excited about it, I think students will be excited about it, younger students as well, in elementary schools or wherever the case may be. And so our mission is on the commission to secure a future for Statesboro youth through empowerment, engagement and education, because that is absolutely important, that is absolutely what we as parents, if you're not a parent, you're a cousin, an older cousin, a brother, a sister, of someone that is young, and so that's what we're pushing for with this commission. So I hope when you review it, that you will vote yes.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak for? Anybody to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Solomon, I've worked with the youth quite a lot, and just seeing this commission, this come together is very important, because I've worked with a lot of at-risk kids, and working with Chief Mike here, and trying to expose relationship, because I deal with a lot of kids that are very young, they're afraid of police, they don't know why, and just want to give them an opportunity to bring them in an area where they can learn and grow, and be a part of something, not be afraid, and to have hope. So this, this is my first time asking, knowing the full grasp of this commission here or committed as about to form, and I heard about it, and I want to get on board, and I pray that y'all would say yes, so that we can go forward, because well, sometimes, you know, kids don't have anything to do. During the winter time, we need to go ahead and start working, because you don't know, something can go off, and we can be in the news, and one of our kids can get shot, and in this town here, it'd be all of us for the wrong reason. While I just see a peace time, we need to start going ahead and doing something, so that we can bring things together to build a community. And starting with our youth, they are, if we get them young, and catch them while they're young, and develop them while they're young, that's, that's the, that's the area we focus on.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak for?
Mayor, Councilman, my name is Wayne Williams, a pastor of New Guinea and Chris Howard Ministry, also the founder and president of Youth Rite Camp Incorporated, and I talk to the youth on a regular basis. In summertime is a very impactful time, but what we have to understand is that it takes something to get to summer. Children need to be alive to get to summer.
That's right.
And so what we focus on a lot is that period where we get them together, but what we need to focus on is how we get them there. And I think a commission like this, actually focus on getting them there, not necessarily to the summer, but to the rest of their life. Something that, that focuses on bringing children up is something that no one should be opposed to. How do we get them into their future? And I talk about how is it that we need to align our visions, we need to align our near-term and our long-range. When you're far in the world, you have to align your front sight with your far side. If you misalign that, you missed the target. So this type of commission aligns those sights, and I urge you to vote yes, because it starts without you.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anybody else to speak for?
That's what you may see. I do have three-year-old daughters that I can.
I see her, she's beautiful.
Children, mine, and any other, who are very important to me. That's why humans have always been plagued with one talent.
Yeah.
Eventually, we do, yeah. And we've had this loving mindset of focusing on the here and now, focusing on what affects us now, being very short-term, be very reluctant to consider the long term. I think it is owed to our children that instead of looking at what we have here and now, set up a system or plan that allows for a long-term goal, to help the upcoming generations that are going to be replacing us in any position we find it's right. Our children, young and ready as they may be, will one day pick up the mantle where we left off and lead the next generation to replace them. It's not about what we can do here and now, it's about what we as a species, be a generation after generation, accomplish, standing on shoulders of giants to reach even further.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak for? Okay, is there anyone to speak against the youth commission? All right, is there anybody here to speak for or against? All right, do we have a motion to close the public hearing? All in favor? All right, is there any discussion on council? Okay, seeing that there is no discussion on council, we will move on to the next agenda item. Next agenda item is a public hearing, um, in first reading of ordinance twenty eighteen up dash eleven, a ordinance amending article two, section two of the city of states where code of ordinances to establish the states where works commission pursuant to city charter section two dash six. Again, I've very, very clear as I campaigned, that the biggest issue that our city is facing is poverty. Everything else that we deal with is secondary, everything else. When we talk about crime, bulk of the crimes is happening because we're dealing with poverty, they're economic-related crimes. So the best way to fight crime is not by building more jails, but by putting people to work. And so that's what this workforce commission is all about, it's about solving the issue of crime by putting more people to work, lifting children up out of poverty. And so, um, at this point in time, I would like to, um, call forth, um, Mr. Curtis, if you will, Curtis Wood, to come forth and present the council.
Mr. Mayor.
One, one, one on the right, is there a motion to?
Is there a second? All in favor?
All right, Mr. Wood.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for giving the opportunity to appear before you all this afternoon, and I appreciate your comments, your opening comments, because you're absolutely right. All begins with alleviating poverty and making economic opportunity available to all of our citizens. As a matter of fact, irregardless of what district you represent, that's your principal responsibility, not the election role, that's basically why you exist, to make sure that equity, equality, and opportunity are provided to all of our citizens, irregardless of their race, ethnicity, nationality, or their economic status. Having said that, the Statesboro Works Commission began its work back in March, we met as a mayor commission for economic development, workforce development and prison reentry. The mayor asked us to work on a strategic plan, which I am available to give you as much or as little as you can stand this evening. I know it's been sort of late, but our motto is rising tide, lifting all together. And before I get too far into it, I am going to name names, because I think we have a very august committee or commission, beginning with myself, Curtis Wood, as you said, president and CEO of Triumph Group. I have a co-chair, Cleveland White, some of you may know, who's sales manager at Springfield Chrysler, he's not here tonight, and if I call the names of any of our council or, council members, then by all means, please stand. First up, we have Tammy Bishop, who is a business services recruiter for the Georgia Department of Labor, Margot Brad, I don't know if Margot's here or not, but she's work-based learning coordinator for the career technical and adult education department at Statesboro Health Sciences Department here. We have Dr. Carrie Christian, who's associate professor of public and non-public studies at Georgia Southern, Dr. Jonathan Grubb, who's assistant professor of criminal justice and criminology at Georgia Southern, Dr. Dominique Calley, who is the director of Business Innovation Group at Georgia Southern University, and we have Melinda Mann Flin, who is a process improvement consultant at Operation OPEC, Dr. Karen Knoffel, who is professor of psychology, undergraduate program coordinator at Georgia Southern University, Dr. Chad Posick, who's associate professional, professor of criminal justice and criminology at Georgia Southern University, and Mr. Frank Quarles, who is a retired electron microstratist, and I'm available to explain that. But as I said before, we started our work back in March, and worked until roughly the end of April, April, working on a strategic plan, and hopefully, you all have received a copy of that strategic plan, one for one or another. But I'll state that our purpose and vision is that the Statesboro Works Commission is to utilize creative and innovative solutions to reduce poverty and build a thriving and inclusive economy, to help reintegrate and reconnect individuals returning to the community after incarcerations into the local workforce and community, thereby allowing them to take ownership of their destiny and start anew. We will accomplish this, this is our vision, by helping Statesboro job seekers maximize their career potential, develop the skills and educational credentials they need to earn a living wage, and become the talent and human resource that area businesses need to prosper, in a nutshell. And one of the things I think I need to establish at the outset is that we're just beginning to work, and with the positive vote of this council, we can really start to work in earnest. And one of the principal things we'd like to do is become conversation starters with those individuals in our community that make the wheels turn economically and so forth, because prosperity is a right of all citizens in our community. Everyone should have the opportunity, based on his or her given talents and their driving initiative, to achieve the quote-unquote American dream, without restriction and, and without any obfuscation. So at the end of our work, we came up with some strategic goals, which I will outline briefly and can provide details as well. Goal number one was to align Statesboro's workforce development initiative with employer needs. I've served in our local Sherman chapter, who's cited in human resource management as workforce readiness director, and I work with other HR professionals across the country talking about these kinds of issues. And Statesboro is very much like other communities, we have individuals who need work, but don't necessarily have the skills that match what employers need. We have employers who have opportunities, but they can't seem to find qualified workers. And in between, we have a lot of barriers that complicate individuals being able to sustain jobs and actually qualify for jobs in the workplace, so that's one of our principal concerns. And I won't go into necessarily all of the objectives, we have about five objectives under this period, but the bottom line is, we want to be a linking point between our employers in the community, our workforce in the community, our academic institutions and other training organizations in the community, and make sure that we're all on the same page, and make sure that we know not only what our current employment needs are, but what our future employment needs are, and to make sure that we work with our academic institutions at all levels. at all levels and our training institutions, and make sure those individuals who are coming into the work pipeline have the education, the skills, and all the access they need to become gainfully employed and earn a living wage here in Statesboro and the surrounding area. First of all, we need to identify, of course, what employers are looking for. And then we need to identify what the shortages are. And just as a brief aside, I worked with Savannah Economic Development Authority on a workforce study for the area, which included Bullitt County as well, about what it is we really need to overcome some of the gaps. And they talked about a lot of things that we talked about, which is soft skills and of course hard skills. And one of the areas they commented on that no one had an answer for was the communication gap. In other words, there were individuals doing great work in that Savannah-Chatham area, just like they're doing in Bullitt County, whether they're agencies or organizations or institutions. And you have individuals who want to do the right thing as employers, but some of the people who need resources don't know how to find those resources, and some of the people who have resources don't know how to connect with the people who need the resources. So one of the key things that we expect that our commission will do is be a D and A resource, and clear council, so to speak, for individuals who have information and resources and need to get it to the people who matter. The second goal for our commission was to enhance economic development in Statesboro. And that's not really complicated. It really boils down to three things, which is, first of all, keep businesses in Statesboro that are already here. And obviously, the flip side of that is to try to attract new businesses to Statesboro. But the sandwich in between, or the middle between the sandwich, so to speak, is that we have to work with existing businesses to help them find ways to become more efficient, more profitable, more capable of serving the needs of our community. And we can do that in various ways, like for instance, keep a program to implement attractiveness or explore attractiveness in Statesboro to baby boomers perhaps, developing a plan to focus more entrepreneurship, utilizing some of the resources in Georgia Southern that are already downtown, to promote entrepreneurship and so on and so forth. And again, I won't go into all of these goals. Goal number three was to reintegrate and connect our city's returning citizens. And by definition, a returning citizen is someone who has spent time either in our state or our federal institutions, curational institutions. This is a huge untapped resource, and it's beginning to be recognized across the country as a resource that really needs to be developed, because up to this point, for the most part, they've been marginalized. And we're at a point in our society where we no longer can afford to have whole segments of our community that are through a waste of essence. These individuals, after they serve their time and they give their pound of flesh and pay the price that society sets on whatever crime, they committed, they deserve to be able to come back and assume full citizenship, and have the opportunity to be employed, to develop the skills and the abilities that they need to be able to be competitive in today's workforce. So that's what this particular goal is all about. Trying to identify who these individuals are, trying to assess their skill set and other work-related resources, and help connect them with the education and the training and the credentials they need to match up with the jobs that we have in this community, and to make sure that we embrace them and bring them back into the fold. Of course, there are a lot of issues around that, but I think we needed to get in that conversation and work hand-in-hand with nonprofits and other agencies to form sort of a collaborative, where we provide these individuals with the types of resource and supports they need to become successful. I really truly believe that the Statesboro Works Commission really is a subset of all the other commissions, or vice versa, all the other commissions, whether it's diversity inclusion, or whether it's youth, or whether it's economic development, workforce development, or prison reentry, they're all leaves on the same branch of the same tree in Statesboro, and they work hand-in-hand. So we look forward to working with the city council, we look forward to working with the partners that are already out there doing the hard work in economic development, workforce development, and prison reentry, and moving this city forward. So I urge you, open now by a mission, to vote yes.
Thank you. Is there anyone to speak for? Dear friends, I know that we are all emotionally committed to the first two commissions that the mayor brought to our attention. These are the things that tug on our heartstrings. But I want you to think about for just a moment, that meaningful employment, employment that's fairly compensated, is the economic engine that drives prosperity anywhere in America, anywhere in the world. This is not just a platitude. Without meaningful employment that's fairly compensated, we might continue to languish as so many other communities do. The thing that energized me in being a part of this commission was hearing the mayor talk about the fact that we are in competition, not so much with Plaxton, not so much with Savannah even. Statesboro's community is in competition for human resources, for human capital, and then for all those other resources that abound in our world. There's plenty of abundance, and some folks know how to get that abundance. As our city fathers, you guys are tasked with helping to bring that to Statesboro. But as I go back to my fundamental premise, and that is that meaningful and fairly compensated employment is that economic engine that will drive all of this. Without that, we can't continue to compete with Plaxton, Bullitt. Not to diminish those communities, but that if you go through any kind of statistical analysis, there are places all over America that are already thinking along these lines. What can we do to attract capital to our place? One of the great assets here that I hadn't thought about was these African students that we have from West Africa, I work with a few of them. And they have some ideas that, again, had not occurred to me. So tapping human potential, not just from Bullitt County, but from all over our planet, should be our playground. So just want you to, again, to say, Mr. Wood was outstanding. I love working with this guy. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else to speak for?
Good evening all, and thank you for letting me take some time. First off, I just want to reiterate how important this commission is. One of the reasons that I signed up to be on this commission is I actually was struggling about which commission to be a part of, because I love all three of them so much. This one really is underlying a lot of problems in Statesboro. This one is underlying a lot of problems in general. Poverty is something that I talk about in my health psychology class, that how it's going to help for adults and children. It's linked to forms of discrimination, it's linked to everyone that we talked about tonight. And so that's why this commission is really important to me, and that's why I want to see it go forward. One other thing that's also really important that comes down to you all as city councilmen is that hope is also an important factor in inspiring people and helping to get them involved and motivated again, to think that our economy can grow, or that people can get employment. And one way that you can instill hope in people is, I really hope, no pun intended, that you guys vote yes, because simply having an endorsement for a mission like this gives credence to the cause. It says that you care about equal employment in the city. It says that you care about reducing poverty, and to provide the hope to your citizens and your constituents to go further with this mission. So I hope that when the time comes to vote on this, that you do vote yes, and otherwise I will see you in a couple weeks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else to speak for?
Good evening, distinguished mayor, distinguished council members. It is an honor to be here to talk to you about issues which are critical in addressing the human condition. I am a student of politics, and that's what I do actually as well. And I feel it important that as policymakers, we also be able to do the work that is required by the public, and that's what you all do every day. It's frustrating, it takes time, it takes energy. But at the same time, looking at these three commissions, which have taken the time, the effort, and the energy to do what they have done to this point, should be recognized and given the due difference it deserves as a document, because it's in everybody's life, the human condition, that's what I'm talking about. Because I feel that, living in this community, I come from West Africa. I went to a Catholic school. I used to wear uniforms, where you have to sign your shoes, to make sure that you are respectable and dignified to your fellow men. And as a result, it informed me what it means as to how you deal with other human beings. And I feel it's important that we can be able to get through this, because it can be noisy, it can be detrimental and all of that, but after all, all of you are on the same mission. You also have to do good for the public. We elected you to office, so I want you to support these commissions in the work that they have done so far, and vote yes to all the three commissions. Because when it comes to kids, for example, the future of the global economy is big data. And the fact that there is poverty, Statesboro can be in the position to change the political and economic landscape, the landscape of this community by teaching kids coding, computer software. Then the issue of poverty, we can be able to take out. If we take the resources, bigger resources we have, we can be able to have that football and foundation to lead this community to a different landscape, so that we can be the envy, not only of Statesboro or Georgia, or the nation, but the entire world. And I think we can do it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak for?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I've been looking for you.
I know you, man.
Since you showed up at the Kiwanis meeting, I know you're busy. My name is William M. Panzer, I'm a professor of economics. My work has taken me around the world, studied economic development, and also looking at international trade policymaking, and interoperability in global economics. But my passion caused me to respond in 2006 to Georgia Southern to come here when I was recruited. It hasn't been an easy walk. However, sitting down here, I was invited by my brother, Dr. Javon, says, well, is this meeting, maybe if you show up, you can speak to the mayor. I know many of you, I know Phil, I know some, I've met Jeff, and I've met with you. I don't know the mayor for a term, but I've seen him from a distance. And there we do, honorable all you are, what a show you put up. Three big commissions being initiated in this small city called Statesboro. If you ask me, the economic development data says we're in an economic disgrace zone. Our breaking incomes are low, we need to grow. I applaud you with your visionary leadership in bringing up all these commissions. I know your heart. It's not easy to run for office.
No.
To be elected, to bring change.
Yes.
I'm all about transformation. And I'll tell you, the last five years, I've received different certifications, so I can add value to different people. I just finished the last one. I went to Amish County in Ohio, the first week of last semester. My students were waiting for me, but this was a mission that I couldn't wait. I studied a gentleman called John Schrock, eighth grade education, with a mission to transform individuals based on values, values and principles, many of which are in the Bible. I'm a Methodist, forgive me. But I know when the Lord's Spirit moves you to bring transformation within yourself. Five years ago, I sought this gentleman out, Dr. John C. Maxwell. He's a leadership coach, globally well-recognized, and he became his student. Today, he is taking me to other countries. We've been to Guatemala, we've been to Paraguay, we've been to this last rain break, to Costa Rica. What are we seeking to do? To transform the hearts of people, so that you can make better use of them. To sit here, and I don't come, I'm not into politics, like my brother is. I was born in the country of Ghana, him in Cambodia. And when we meet, I want to talk about how to influence the course of things. And leadership is about influence. Phil? Honorable Phil. He's been a member with me in Kiwanis. And honorable Jonathan. When these young people and all of us look at you guys, it is about how you influence the course of affairs in this small city. I've seen the chief of police come to Kiwanis to talk to us. You all have a major, major task to redefine the way things are done in this camp, in this, in this city, and in this county, that we all have come to love. I've been here 12 years now, and I want to call this home.
Thank you.
And I want to contribute to the idea of transforming this community. As a first term, but paid already to bring the voice of Dr. Javon Maxwell to this community. On November the 3rd, let me do a shitless block. I've already in partnership with the Yerbro Everett Center for the Arts. Jamie has been very good to me. Bringing the voices of John C. Maxwell, Carrie Fiorina, Daniel Payne, Debracille, and Taylor Perry, being down from Atlanta. Now imagine if we had to bring these people here. We would have to pay nearly a million dollars, John alone costs about $200,000. As his mentor, under his mentorship, I've been given the opportunity to pay, to bring it here. And I'm challenging you all to show up. Show up and learn from the art of the shift, shifting mindsets, so that we can transform our community. As an economic development person, my hope is that we'll give greater hope to the next generation. And what we are doing today, one day, these walls will be able to pay testimony to the great works that you have done. I want you all to unify around all these committees that have been erected here. I'm so delighted I followed my brother here today. In fact, I went back to my office to get all these, so I can just, after I started hearing, the great vision that you have.
Thank you.
And I pray the Lord's heart, you know, our Lord's heart is about love. Our Lord's heart, our Lord's heart, our Lord Jesus never healed anyone, but I show you Now, if an economist can stand here and speak about compassion, think about it, Phil. Show a heart of compassion toward the mayor. Mr. Mayor, direct a heart of compassion toward my friend.
I love you, Phil.
That's a brace. And let's deliver this for the citizens.
We're gonna do it, we're gonna keep this doing.
Of Statesboro.
Alright.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have one last thing I'd like to say. I'd like to speak for all three of these councils, because they are in time. But I would like to speak to our councilman. I believe I made one of our councilmen uncomfortable, because I watched his every move since our commission was shot down. And I don't know if it was the look of disgust on my face, or the fact that I didn't look away, but I'd like to remind you that your constituents are watching me, and they're disgusted with your actions tonight, and they will not look away. You are here to represent your community, not some petty little bee you have. So please, think about your constituents, think about the job you were elected to do, and remember, you will be up for election again.
Is there anybody else to speak for, or yes? All right, is there a motion to bring the public hearing to a close? All those in place? All right, the public hearing is closed. Is there any discussion by council? No discussion? Okay. All right, and seeing that there is no discussion, we'll move on to agenda item 13, consideration of a motion to approve the four consistent members to the Appellate Council Board.
Mayor, we sent the terms on the Appellate Board, I believe, in the eighth of September, and Mayor Pollard has made his appointment. Councilman Duke has made his, and Councilman Boyd has made mine, so everybody is, it's been a long evening. So Councilman Riggs, John, and John, we all from either state now, we all keep the ones you have. If you still want to send, be in the suit and email, just let us know what, where you are.
Good job. Good job. Well, we recognize the shooting lanes, Mr. White. Gotcha. All right, thank you. All right. And so is there a motion to approve the individuals that we've appointed?
Yes.
No need? Okay. All right, we'll move down to agenda item 14, which is other business from City Council. Was there any other business from City Council?
Yeah, we didn't get to talk about it back when we were looking at the railroad bed road, but I was going to suggest, since we didn't really make any actions, that Frank, is there any way you could review that document as it relates to the SNS railroad? Maybe we could, as a council, suggest that we review that document. You know, compare the list proposed to the SNS dream like that, and see how they match up. Do you have already the public hearing?
Any other business for council? Okay. Well, our city manager is not here. We're moving on to agenda item 16, public comments. Are there any public comments tonight? I know you're getting tired of... Oh, no, I'm tired. Again, there are issues that transcend what we're doing here. This is the 70th anniversary of the Human Declaration of Human Rights. Think about that. World War II closed with catastrophic effect, and out of that came the willfulness of people to say, "We need to ensure that human rights are worldwide." So again, this is 70th anniversary, and we're having, this high community is having a potluck dinner at our house on Saturday night, so it's a very wonderful affair. Sam's been to one of those, and you'd be welcome to come, I've got invitations here. I wrote my name and telephone number on the case, you want to give me a call and say how to get there. Thank you. Your name, what's your name? My name is Frank Quarles. Frank Quarles, and I am, I like to call my prosecutors. Any further public comments? Seeing that there isn't one, at this point, we will have a motion to go with your executive decision.
We have an executive decision?
Yes. Is there a motion? Second? All right. All right, we're not moving towards the second of the session.